I'll get a little bit started. This is Board of Selecting regular meeting Wednesday, February 14th, 5 o'clock. And we will call the meeting from order. First order of businesses, I'd just like to make a few short remarks. First of all, I wanted to make sure that folks were aware of the fact that we were not able to really address the RFPs the way we wanted to when we met during the special meeting earlier or previously. And the intent was for us to do it here during this meeting. However, what we identified is that based on the agenda that we had and things that we needed to cover with this meeting, I was concerned that we would not give it the amount of time that it really deserved. So we opted to have, we opted to move the country club discussion to a meeting specifically for the country club discussion, and that'll take place on the 28th of this month. And that meeting, the agenda item on that meeting will be the country club evaluation of the RFPs. And we will also have an executive session at the same, on the same day to review the financials. And we will also, at that point in time, get an update as far as the, during the executive session, as far as where we stand, as far as the open community's lawsuit is concerned. Since we will be in executive session, the public can advantage and do that as well. So I wanted to apologize for any inconvenience that that may have caused on anyone again, and let me know that that's what the plan is at this point in time. We, also, there were some comments made in regards to our housing committee plan, or our housing plan for the town. And we did obviously take those notes, and we are reviewing those very carefully as relates to the plan. I have asked the Housing Committee Chair to join us in our March meeting to go over that. We will also have discussions as relates to committee versus commission, things of that nature at that time. But at the March meeting, we will have the chair here, we will discuss some of the changes that we are looking to make. And again, I wanted to emphasize that the housing will be very important of the POCD process that we're engaging in, so the changes will obviously be made with that in mind that these are things that need to be put into the POCD. So again, in our March, during our March regular meeting is when we'll look to discuss I wanted to mention, just very briefly mention, a couple of events that are at this point in time planned. There's a, there's a community, a DEI Community Conversation on Disability that will be taking place on the 28th at 7:00 at the library. These are, these are events that will actually be, are coordinated by the library, going through the library on this. And there's also a sustainability compost lecture on the 17th, which is this Saturday, at 3:00. And I bring that up for a couple of reasons, at least of which I think people should go there because it's a really good thing, but it's also something from an initiative standpoint that this board will be taking up as time goes on, from my perspective, to discuss exactly what we can do and how we can do it from a composting standpoint here in town. So it's something that'll be pertinent as we move forward, so hopefully a lot of folks can make that. And with that, I understand that our Superintendent of our Woodbridge Schools is not available tonight, and that Donna Kugan and Luthiasak will be stepping in in her place in the office.
Really dumb. I was here for more of the board.
So, good evening. I'm going to share Vonda's report with you. My name's Donna Kuna, and I'm the Director of Business Services and Operations for the Board of Ed. Our enrollment, we usually inform you, is 877 students. That's just up one from last month. And typically, there's not a lot of movement this time of year. Maybe when the weather gets warmer and houses start selling, and you know, we might see some more movement in the spring. We want everyone to mark your calendar for March 6th. That's free across America. We like to have our elected officials participate, so we hope to see many of our town dignitaries and friends joining us at Beecher Road School to celebrate our love of reading. You can bring your favorite book or pick one from our library, but we'd like you to hold the date, and more information will be coming soon.
What time does that usually take place, just for planning purposes?
Middle morning, yeah. Earlier in the morning, probably 9:00.
Thank you.
Okay, my favorite topic, the roof project. We learned in the end of January that our application for the roof grant was approved with the state. We'll be getting a reimbursement of 32.14% on our roof expenditures. The next steps is the Town Building Committee and the Board of Ed will both approve the plans drawn up and created by Silver Petrocelli, and that will happen by the end of the month. And then on March 7th, we have a Plan Review Committee meeting scheduled with the state that Vonda and I will both attend. And after we tick a few more boxes with them, then we will be able to send out a bid. And hopefully, we're planning to be in construction this summer.
Donna, I'm sorry, just, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'll tell, but the 31% is higher than we anticipated.
That's right. And that may have been a little confusion on my part. There's two rates. When you, if you do new construction, you get a lower rate, and if you are doing what they call general construction, it's a little bit higher rate. So the lower rate is like 22%, 23%. And so I think there was maybe a little confusion on my part. Is this new roof a new construction, or is this remodeling our old roof? So I did do a little more investigation, and I feel certain, what I read today, that the roof is general construction, and we'll be getting a higher rate.
Awesome. Thank you. Great news.
Let's see. Vonda was able to participate in elected official stays hosted by Amity Superintendent Jen Byers alongside many Board of Education members and Town Board members, as well as Board members from Orange and Bethany. She really enjoyed seeing so many of you there. We toured Amity Middle School Orange and Amity Middle School Bethany, took a fun bus ride to Amity High School and toured their building, and had a great lunch hosted by the High School Culinary Arts Program. Everywhere we went, we saw students busy learning, and it was wonderful to see the progression of content in the middle and high school classes. And then, lastly, our summer programs, as we mentioned, that we are going to hopefully be in construction this summer at Beecher on the Roof and some of the grounds. We're going to have our summer programs at Bethany, Amity Middle School Bethany. And again, we were grateful for Superintendent Jen Byers from Amity, who's going to offer us these spaces. So both our academic extended school year program and the, you know, fun summer enrichment type programs will be not at Beecher this summer, but will be at Amity Middle School in Bethany. That was how we thought.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next agenda item is one that would normally be part of our set agenda, but these are refunds, tax refunds. And Pat Crisco was good enough to offer, and Tony felt it was, it would be helpful. If Pat actually gave us a little explanation, since there are a number of new members on the board, and gave us a little more in-depth information on this, I hope that, thank you very much.
If you have it in front of you, this is what happens every month. Well, not quite every month, sometimes, but the town is required to give refunds that are requested, which are overpayments, back to the individuals who request them. We have a couple of policies. One is motor vehicles. My policy has been that if someone contacts the assessor's office and shows proof that they've gotten rid of a car, and they are doing money back, that is all I require. I don't require them to come and give me a letter or anything, because I feel that what the assessor requires of them is very strong in some cases, and that takes care of that. Personal property, we very seldom ever have anyone ask for refunds back. We're usually still chasing people back, not to give money back. Real estate refunds are done when, sometimes, at closing, the original owners, if they escrow through a bank, pays it, it's been paid, closing again, but I require a lot of paperwork and proof before we do that, before we give them. If they have any questions about it, no, it's usually some people's, though.
How significant is it, generally speaking? How significant is it in terms of dollars?
It can be high. One of our biggest refund things that happen is with lease companies. Every time someone turns in a lease, and the lease company has paid it, we then refund back to the lease company. And if any of you have ever done that, have ever leased a car and then bought it out, one of the issues becomes, the lease company is still charging you the full amount, and we've given them back a certain amount. You know, if anyone who has that issue, come see us right away, and we can tell you exactly what we sent back to the lease company and when it was sent to them, so that you can discuss with them that you don't owe the entire amount. We do have some refunds on real estate, and usually those are fairly high, but people have to request it, and not everybody does, or if it's someone who has sold a home and moved away, sometimes they don't even know. And it's not our responsibility, according to state statute, to go after that, have to refund it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? I know I've said it before, but you are in the top 10 in terms of tax collections, which is attributed to your office and attributed to our residence. And so thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is...
You have to...
Ah, yes, I'm sorry. We have to actually take an action on this one. Thank you very much. When we accept the, accept the report, the tax collect, refund report, go ahead and motion.
We'll make that motion.
I'll say you did.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Alison. Our next agenda item is specific, just a little bit more on composting. In, associated with the lecture that we're having, we will be subsequently offering those people who participate and those who are interested, an opportunity to buy some of the products that are helpful when it comes to composting. Please, so keep me, keep me honest on this. To that end, we have a company who is willing, or has been willing to work with the different municipalities and actually establish a website specific to the town that offers that type, those types of products at a discounted rate, if you might say, or at their...
I believe it was just their rate. In the past, SCROG has actually subsidized it. This year, they're unable to do that, and so, but we also are able, because of that, in the past, when they did subsidize, we only had like one product or two products. So it was a certain compost barrel. This, because they're not subsidized, we actually get a much more varied array of items. And so there can be the tumbler composters, if you've ever seen those, or standalone ones, which I think is great for this town, because we do have different needs and different wants.
Try to give me a chance to introduce you. So, no, thank you. So at any rate, they generally do use the name of the town as well as a seal, so for that reason, I felt it was important that the Board of Selecting be involved and at least sign off on that being them doing that. So to that end, I wanted Hillary Drum, who's co-chair of our Sustainability Committee, to come in and give us a little bit more information on that, and answer any questions that anyone might have in that regard, so that we can see what went forward with that. So it's Hillary?
That really was most of it. So, yeah, so as mentioned before, we are having this lecture on Saturday. We'd love you all to come. It's from 3:00 to 4:00. Domingo Medina is giving it. He is absolutely fantastic and knows more about compost than anyone I've ever talked to before. So absolutely, please, please come. But we're also, we'd love to be able to offer, to be able to promote compost bins, because there are a number of people in town who do compost in their backyard, but then there are some people who want a little extra something. And in the past, we've done this before, in 2020, I know is the, I think, the furthest data I could find that went back on the website. So, and we've done it before with SCROG. That's who recommended brand builders to us in the first place. That's who they subsidized. And so we've done it a few times, and we've had success selling them each time. The, it's done totally, we just put the website up. We're not collecting the money this time. We're not having anything to do. It's just offering the opportunity. So it's completely up to the community, what they want to buy and how they want to do that. And again, we're just trying to promote composting in general in different kinds of ways. So if we can have that kind of website, again, we will, we'll really be able to hit people at different, you know, comfort levels, and hit more people, hopefully.
And as you said, these are different products.
There are many different products. So it's not only the compost barrels this time, too, and like I said before, the tumbler and the stand, freestanding barrel. There's also rain barrels, too, which I've had several people ask me about recently. Were we going to do that? And I said, yeah, hopefully. Hopefully, it's on its way, so.
That event is at the library?
Yes, so this Saturday at the library, 17.
Thank you for your effort in bringing composting and rain collection efforts to our town. Unfortunately, I'll be traveling for the long weekend and not able to attend, but I do have a couple of questions. So if folks aren't able to attend, how can they get engaged?
Well, you asked. We, they're videoed, so you can watch the video afterwards.
Okay, great.
So, and so are all the ones we've had so far. We've had a water one, we've had a heat pump one. They're all up on the website of the town.
When you say the website, you're referring to sustainability on the town website?
No, they are on the town YouTube, I believe, with all the other video type things.
Okay, video, so with the, okay.
I'm not fully sure.
Yeah, they're on the GATV YouTube. We are recording them as they happen, and they are uploaded a few days later.
Okay.
And for folks who do get the bins, is there an intention or goal of having, like, is each household or business doing the composting and using the materials in their own system? Or are we hoping to get some more meaningful compost system established at the transfer station, or something larger scale?
So I would say, one, in regard to that, I think food waste diversion and compost sort of need to, sort of, so when you say compost, do you mean the actual, like, finished product of the compost?
Yes.
I would presume that anybody who buys these, they're fairly household-use size, so they would use that on their own property. I don't think they would ever give it back to anyone else. It would be a difficult process. Just having my own compost barrels, it would be an odd process to try to get that out and give it away.
The other part of your question, though, I think, kind of want to delve into that a little.
You want me to? Yeah, done. So in regards to food waste, though, in general, we are going to try further to really engage more of the community. We actually just are working also on a survey to get people's opinions and thoughts and feelings on food waste diversion and separating their food waste. Because again, it is a separate, there's different parts to this. It's maybe you're not willing to touch it yourself, maybe you're not willing to put it in your backyard, maybe you're not willing to, because we've dealt into this a little bit in the past, and sometimes people say, like, oh, well, if I had a compost bin, I would do it. If I didn't have to put it in my backyard, I would do it. You know, they have different barriers for them. So we're trying to, we want to put out the survey, actually, along, just got finalized today, so it will hopefully be going out. Honestly, I intend to send it out tomorrow with some of the promo materials for Saturday, so again, to just get the community members going with finding out exactly what the barriers are, so we can address all of those to really hit composting and food waste separation and diversion, more community-wide.
Thank you.
It is something that from a town perspective, we want to invest, we want to investigate to the point where we identify what we could do. So, we've looked at it in the past, but I think there's some, there's some new opportunities that exist that might make it very attractive in our NLC, if you want to add anything to that.
I'd just say, I've been having some conversations with Hillary about this, and we're, you know, looking at these backyard opportunities, the pickup opportunities for residential and, you know, transfer station opportunities as well, so we'll be working on for that in the next couple of months.
And I did want to, want you to speak a little bit more about it, because it might, it might incense some folks to actually go on Saturday, knowing that maybe there's something that'll be happening in town if it relates to this, and it'll just make them that much more aware and in a position to make some decisions as relates to it. From a town perspective, obviously, there's a lot of weight involved with composting, so anything we can do, not having that way go into our trash system helps us from that perspective as well, so.
Right. I would say the unique thing about Domingo speaking is he really gives the full pros and cons and, you know, ins and outs of composting itself. It doesn't necessarily have to be you personally doing it. It's not like, here's how you're going to separate your things. It's really the science behind all of it and how it improves the soil and all of those parts of it. So I would say definitely for everyone, even if you're not personally interested in separating your, your compost, but you should. But even if you let everyone know that, like, this is a great thing to learn about on so many levels, and he, again, he is very highly educated about this. It's much more than, than just take your banana peel and put it in this bin sort of situation.
The lecture isn't streamed by any chance, is it?
I don't, we don't have the capability, I don't think, right to livestream, but...
We could livestream it if you really did request it. It's just a matter of taking the laptop behind me and bringing it with the camera over to the library.
I'll check with the money guy and see what we can do. Everything we, these days, these months, we have to make sure we do that, so. So thank you, man, I appreciate that. It's good to know.
Can I ask a quick question about outreach to the Beecher community and maybe the Amity community as well? Because we all know that if our kids come home and tell us we need to put that banana in the red pot, like, do the composting.
Yeah.
It's really going to catch into households, so can you...
Okay. I, I, so, so we do compost, or we do separate the food waste at Beecher, and it is picked up by a residential hauler or a commercial hauler, Blue Earth Compost, and that's, we've been doing that since 2018, on and off because of COVID. So that does work, and that is done in a certain way. Again, one of the things that's a little bit tricky with learning the rules of how to compost or how to separate your food is it's different depending on how you're doing it or how, where the end product is. So like, if you're doing it in your backyard, you may not put up the sweets and the meats because the barrel is going to come. But if you're doing it for Blue Earth, the sweets and meats are going right in there. So, and you can possibly also put in napkins and, you know, paper products that don't have plastic involved. So some of that is great for the younger students to be able to, you know, come home and say, oh, this is how we, you know, they are used to it. They've been doing it for years now. The biggest challenge there tends to be the young kids, because they're new every year. You know, the kindergartners come in and they don't know how to do it, but everybody gets them on board and they do it. And further along the line, the Amity Middle School does not separate their food waste. And I, the high school also, I thought they did, but then I just went to a high school thing and they do not, they don't. But they do use Havens Harvest, which is another kind of food separation concept that we also do at Beecher, where unused, unopened cafeteria sold food, so you know it's certain thing, basically, or quality, or is then taken and put in a space to be donated. And Havens Harvest is a company that is a nonprofit where volunteers, it's kind of like Uber for donated food, like anyone can, it's an app, you sign up, and it'll tell you where there's a food donation that needs to be picked up and where it needs to go, and you can sign up for one, you can sign up for 100 of them, you can do anything. So, we, as you said, at Beecher, they are using that at the high school, but they, then they said they want to get into the composting, but they aren't doing it just yet.
Wonderful. So, thank you.
So I apologize if I, I just want to make sure the listeners and I have this straight, but if someone does want to purchase...
Yes.
...one of these bins or a rain barrel...
Yes.
Is the only opportunity this Saturday?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
So, we can keep that open. I think we would keep it open at least until Earth Day on April 27th. And then the proposed delivery date, because this gentleman covers a large area, so his proposed delivery date was early May, which I actually thought is, should be fine, honestly, for us if, yeah, they're not going to really start composting that much earlier, even when we've got snow again. So, and we actually, luckily enough, still have a couple of the barrels left over from the last sale, so we will use those. They're, I think we were tracking them down exactly where their location was in these buildings, but we wanted to, so we can use those as example on Saturday and for Earth Day to say, here's at least one of them, so, because they're actually rather larger than they look in the picture when you see a human next to them. So we can show that as one of the examples, so people can touch it and feel it and see how it fits in their car, which, for record, someone wants to fit one in a Prius, so like, you can do it, even though they seem large. But, so, and then actually, somebody once said, somebody picked one up on an electric bike, too, so, you know, where there's a will.
Where there's a will.
Yeah. When you want to compost, you want to compost. So, but nonetheless, it will have those, which will be great, and then we can do the pickup in May, if that's what, you know, if everybody is okay with this, then we can go ahead with that plan.
Thank you.
But we could even, I mean, honestly, if we were so successful and we had so many people that were doing it, this company seems very agreeable to working with us on things. And being that we're not being subsidized or anything like that, I bet we could work out and having it even longer, you know, having a ongoing sale, really.
I was glad you mentioned Earth Day, April 27th. We'll put another plug in for that. This event certainly promises to be one that's different than what we've done in the past.
Absolutely.
And very exciting and fun from a family perspective, and very, very productive in terms of some of the things that are going to be available there, from shredding to a number of other things.
Did you want me to comment on...
Please.
...the general what's going to be there? Okay, so we're going to have a lot of recycling, trucks mattress recycling, paper shredding, electronics recycling. Let's see, we're going to be doing lots of different tables of recycling stuff and lots of, like, lots of different education tables, lots of community members, nonprofits and such are going to help out with different things like that. We're taking any kind of other groups. We're also going to be doing a farmers market, some farm programmers that are here. And so, and then we're actually at the point now where we're working on how to engage the community businesses and seeing how we can do that. But we really want to make this event, in the past, it's been a great Earth Day event, and we want to make this really emphasis on community and really including everybody and making it a town-wide event. So not just, we are definitely going to have stuff here on the Green, and that will be the majority of things, but we'll have stuff at Beecher Road School, the clothing pre-cycle. We're working on the tag sale here, as well as having tag sales at the Coachman Square as well, so that, again, it's a town-wide thing. This is not just something we're doing right here on one little piece of grass, so.
Thank you. Might be able to tell, really excited, ours Sustainability Committee and what they're doing and some of the things that we're making, so I certainly appreciate it. I know you have another member back there.
Yes, yes, this is one of our crew show, and she reminded me, too, we're having an EV car show as well, as part of the town, to show off.
Cool.
So if you know anyone with EV cars, can, some of you, we'd love for you to show them off. We'll have a parking lot area to, again, encourage other people to buy EV cars. And someone behind me has a really cool Rivian, she's very good at showing off, as well as a e-bike, too. So we want to, again, get people excited about different options and what's available.
Thanks for all you're doing, thanks for the information.
Any other questions?
Questions? Thank you very much.
Please leave your feedback.
President's beginning to do, and I'll make the motion that we approve our, we approve the website, approve use of our town name and our town, our town seal on the website associated with the composting lecture that's coming up. Any discussion? All in favor? Thanks so much, appreciate it. All right. Now we can move on to the next item, is the Senator Jim Pitt Award, and we have Dwight Rowland, who's the Chair of the Hillary Committee, to provide us some, some information as it relates to that.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Just like to give you an update, a brief summary of where we are. We went out to bid in December last year. We received four bids. They're received on January 10th. After, after receiving the bids, we had an apparent low bidder, Pep, at a Clinton. We met with them, the apparent low bidder, on January 31st, Tony, myself, and the architect. the apparent low bidder, on January 31. Tony, myself and the architect met with their staff and, and also the owner of the company. They were quite low. They were about 200,000 low than the other three bidders. About 200,000, they were about 785, 775. And the other bidders were up in the 900s. But the architect has worked with this company before and also Tony contacted the high school because this company, these contractors also did the, did their lecture hall work over there. And they got high marks. So, and they were, they were real, they were good working in a, in a facility that was occupied in the school system and everything else. So we're going to have the same situation. We are in center. So, and I was, during the walkthrough last Friday, I was also part of that night. We also sat in a lecture hall and it, and it was done pretty well. So looked, really looked very nice. We asked them a bunch of questions about their current workload, which they, which they addressed, about doing work within an occupied building especially. We have seniors there. They need access to the elevator and that. So that was, that was extremely important. But the main thing was schedule. And we, and we wanted to make sure that whenever they started, they were able to get done. They guaranteed that once the contract is executed, they can have the work completed within 150 days. We're targeting, our target right now is to have the work completed by October this year so that it's ready for the election on November 5. So that was the key date and they've agreed to do that. So we're recommending we enter into a contract. The base bid was 775, 530. We want to exercise a bid alternate for the spiral duct, which is a much better project, product that'll be installed in the gym ceiling for another 9375. So the contract value would be 784, 905. Our budget right now, the remaining budget for this project is about 815,000. That's what we talked with Tony. That's left. That'll give us, well, a contingency of roughly $30,000 left to take care of any unforeseen conditions, things that come up or whatever it is. So, so we'd like to, we'd like to have your approval so we can enter into a contract. We have actually, we have a building committee meeting tomorrow and we'll be discussing that. So, but it's, I think it's pretty urgent that we, that we get the contract so we can get the clock ticking. So we're not running into a deadline in November trying to get, trying to rush it.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions for Dwight?
I have a general question about the bidding process. Is, is anyone able to bid or are there restrictions? Are we only, are we limited to certain contractors?
No, anybody who, it wasn't. It was the town policy. It was actually advertised throughout. So anybody who was interested was able to submit a bid.
Great. Thank you.
It's a project, it's a project that really needs to get done. The HVAC in there is terrible. So this, this project will address all those needs and give an upgrade to the gym as well.
Funding for it is a grant.
We have, yep, we have a state grant of $500,000 and we have art funds of $330,000, $333,000. That's roughly $800,000.
So Tony, when using grant money, there aren't restrictions on who can bid? I, I thought there was some specification.
Anybody should bid, but there are restrictions on like prevailing wage, bonding, you know, you have to, you can't be on a state department list. You have to, the states got requirements when we bid. So what we do is we, we advertise the bid statewide and then we get the responses. And then for, let's say grant, the state awarding agency has to approve of the winning bidder. And so we've gone through that process already. And so this is a couple of stuff here.
I'd like to call for motion at both the base bid and the alternate number two, the award to do volunteer construction for a total of 784,905 dollars. Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
Is there any additional discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion passed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dwight. Thank you very much. Great news along. Next item on our agenda is public comment, which we have set for six o'clock. So as a result, we'll move on to the, the item number seven, which, which comes after that. So you, you will have enough time to deal with some of these other items. So, let's see. This, this, this item is for approval or Google, is the right word, for construction of a barn at 48 Center Road. The farm on 48 Center Road has required a conservation historic preservation easement for that property. And basically it's Oliver and Christina Holland own the property located at 48, 7, 48 Center Road. And their property contains a conservation historic preservation easement. They're looking to build a barn and as a result require approval from three of our organizations here in town, which is Board of Selectmen, the Woodbridge Parks Association and the Woodbridge Historical Society. They're on the agenda to meet with the other two entities later on in this month. They've been working this process for quite some time. They can't go, they will need to go through the normal building process, the building process in order to get this done. And they have already spoken with building who seem to have no qualms about or no issues or concerns in regard to what they're looking to do. But they did identify the easement, which they cannot, they cannot administer, they cannot provide the permits that are required until such times these tools are, are received from these other, these other entities. And the easement states that the grantee may approve, we can approve the barn upon showing that the grantee, upon showing that such a barn or outbuilding in the site is designed not, not to detract from a historical architectural characteristic building of the property, excuse me. Like we, you have information in your packages that you received, showing what they were looking for. Obviously this would be done with a contingent or with pending the approval from the other, our approval was pending the approvals from the other organizations. But since we're meeting and we can do it now, it's a system in terms of being able to get this and go, as I say, we've been trying for, for quite some time at this point. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve building of barn at 48 Center Road as per 4.8 of Conservation Historic Easement Amendment pending, the subsequent authorization from Woodbridge Parks Association and the Woodbridge Historical Society.
I have a couple of questions just about the process. And then I actually had some questions about what they're playing with as well. In terms of the process, I don't know if the Board of Selectmen has ever been asked to act on this historic easement. It's the first easement we ever had. So I wasn't sure how we were meant as the Board of Selectmen to judge whether the town's interest, because I remember attending the meeting where we voted to spend $300,000 to purchase this easement with the thought in mind that it was going to restrict development on the property. So I'm just curious to know what criteria the Board of Selectmen needs to apply. I personally am not convinced that I have an understanding of the architectural and the historic preservation aspects of the project. I also don't think I have enough information in front of me as to what kind of materials they're going to use, what the massing is, is it going to be visible from the street? Is that necessary to keep the integrity of the historic look of the property, et cetera? So I wondered if this is something that the Architectural Review Committee of the TBZ might come and talk to us about? Because I would think they would have expertise. Or perhaps it's just the, the land use attorney that might come and talk to us about it. But I was hoping to just get a little bit more information. Because again, this was a purchase from open space funds that was utilized for this. And I just want to make sure that on behalf of townspeople, we're maintaining everything we're supposed to be maintaining. And I do see from the plan that there's an accessory dwelling unit planned for the barn. And I don't know if, certainly a barn on a farm is something that's kind of anticipated in the restriction. But I, it doesn't say anything in the restriction about accessory dwelling units. And we've in fact changed our zoning regs since the time of this easement. So I wondered if we could get legal opinion about this and perhaps table this until we do have the market.
The, obviously we did consult with Jerry on this. We did review the easement itself and the easement does indicate very specifically that they can develop, they can put some additional structures on there. Obviously that's the reason it, it indicates the, the criteria that it does from that perspective. I don't, trying to figure out exactly what would be enough, but maybe the appropriate process here is, I'd like to make the motion that we, we approve the building. And if I can get a second, we can then discuss it as we are at this point in time. We have also, if it's necessary, we, I believe the owner is coming in who might be able to provide us some additional information that might help us in terms of our decision. So Chris, so maybe what I'll do is I, I know this was, item was scheduled for after the public comment. So maybe we'll table it. If it's, if it's agreeable to the board, we'll table this agenda item until this is done as we have the property owner here who could also provide us with some additional information that might pertain to what we're, what we're talking about. Is that agreeable? Okay. Thank you. All right. Actually, I'm not sure. We could go to the next item because I think Mr. Roy's not here yet as well.
You guys are running early tonight. Look at you go. So efficient.
So that's a good one. We actually, yes, that's one that we don't. Thank you. Let's, let's go to number 10. Let's go to number 10, Brett, which would be the approval of the regulations for the Northwest Cemetery pursuant to Code 197-3. And in this case, there are regulations associated with our cemetery. This cemetery mentioned that have not been changed for decades. And our, the good Jerry Shaw has for quite some time been putting some time into this to identify how our, our regs compared to other regs. For example, Bethany, who just recently did this and has, has put that together. And prior to her leaving, she had done what she felt was a complete job on that house. And I know you've got a background from Jerry on this. I don't know if you want to comment any additional.
Um, yeah. Mrs. Shaw, before she left while she was training me, there were a couple of passion projects that she asked me to graciously see the fruition for her. And one of them was, she's been the administrator for the Northwest Cemetery and I'm stepping into that role. And while we were training, the original regulations were the, the last time the regulations for the cemetery were updated were 1971. And so our ordinance states that the Board of Selectmen, you are in charge of providing the regulations and the rules for the cemetery and approving them. And they become effective following the public hearing. The regulations that she wrote, it was prompted after a few specific examples where they were outdated. For example, the number of cremains that can be buried within a similar plot. Also the relationship of people that can be buried in the same plot. Things that have just become outdated over time. She worked very closely with, Chris Sullivan has weighed in. She also reached out to Warren, has seen them, town council has seen them. She modeled them off of Bethany's most recent updated regulations because that's our neighbor town and has similar needs. Jerry, mine and town council has also reviewed them and has, they're up to date with the state and other regulations necessary. So it is in your hands as the board who is in charge of that Northwest Cemetery property to decide whether to approve the regulations or not.
Thank you. We can start with motion and have discussion after the second? Or are there any questions for Allison before we go into that?
I do have a question for that, Mika. I saw section 4.2, no trees or shrubs will be planted in the cemetery. I certainly understand the reasoning to avoid root intrusion. But often cemeteries are really valuable places for tree canopy cover. And Woodbridge is not as important because we have a lot of trees. But is that even around the perimeter? Or like can they, so is this, will this be a treeless?
No. So, no. So in fact, we kind of have the excavator on Northwest. There's so much tree growth and vegetation that actually we have some lots that were originally for sale that aren't for sale right now because of the root structure and how overgrown. Those areas in the drainage example aren't that Warren and the excavating companies are looking into at some point, the board will have to look into a plan for how to mediate the, the fact that we actually have lots that we can't use. We've taken them off for sale. So there is no shortage of trees and, and the removal of anything within there has to go through the board anymore. So.
Additionally, is that pertaining to the folks who are, to the, to the folks who utilize it? Or is that, I mean, does it pertain in terms of, does it pertain to the town?
No, it pertains to the visitors also. Yes.
In other words, if you wanted to add?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mika. Because I totally misunderstood that then.
Yes, I misunderstood what you're asking. So yes, at the, that regulation in particular is if you go visit someone there, you can't plant a tree.
Okay. Thank you. If there was a big catastrophic windstorm and we need to replant as a year?
You won't, yes, that's the town. We care for that.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
And meantime, there is also that other overgrowth problem that we'll, I'm sure I'll, I'll get to you guys someday about that.
That was my own question. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick process question? So this is all part of ordinance? This is a piece of ordinance. Is it just the same way we would be making changes to ordinance? We're going to, usually there's an ordinance committee and that comes to us. But can we set, and are we intending to set the public hearing and then publish the changes to the ordinance?
I don't think you need a public hearing. And I don't, I think we have an ordinance for cemetery. It's obviously, it's chapter 197. And it says in 197-3, the said rules and regulations shall not be effective till after public hearing. The one reasonable notice to all persons entitled to vote in the town meeting. So you probably need to have something with a public to comment and keep opinions on it. But it doesn't, it's not an ordinance change. It's just sort of having a meeting and telling people what we're doing, what they want to accomplish.
Right. So is it, is there like a redline version of this? Like what is existing and what we're changing? There is a number of those.
I don't have, I don't have the old regulations. The old regulations are very short.
Yes.
Right?
Hardly.
Yeah, they're, 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 they were, no, they don't tell us exactly what we're changing because it's basically an entire, I mean, it's, it's one page.
The old ones.
The old ones.
Yeah, the existing ones. So we're making the change. I just, I'm trying to understand what the changes are.
So, this is the, these are the regulations. The old, there's no redlining really. But just, there's no, you'd have to read them both.
Put in chat GTP.
Yeah.
Create a redline.
Exactly. Perfect use of air.
I'll do it right now. Hold on.
Please do. Yeah. I'd love that.
So what, would we publish it in the paper? How are we doing it?
Publish it in a newspaper.
Okay. So there will be a document or something.
There will be a document and that, it does say, you do it. The Board of Selectmen has the, has the ability to promulgate regulations. It doesn't become, it's no reason to have it part of the ordinance, but it is a written document and it does say it's not effective until you have the public hearing. The board can now vote on those regulations and then set the public hearing for the March meeting if you want.
So is that the motion you're looking for?
Yes, it's, yes, the only thing, yes, it's the, basically the motion to approve the updated regulations of the Northwest Cemetery as pursued into Code 197-3, which will become effective following the public hearing to be held during the next Board of Select, regular Board of Select meeting on March 13. Have a reading motion.
So after the close of that public hearing, then we would vote to make a?
Correct.
Like a?
Correct.
Okay.
You can't do it that way. You could make it effective tonight, subject to the public hearing if you want. But it's probably easier to do it at the public hearing, get to listen to people if anybody comes in and you go to approve.
That's what I agree with.
I'll make your motion.
Is there a second?
And is there a specific time that the meeting never going to do it? Remember, we have to publish that in the paper, which means we have a public hearing.
Yes, we will.
Don't make it the end of the meeting because then we have to stretch until we get to it.
Yes, we will, we will set up a time the way we've done in the past.
Yeah, is it have to be part of the motion?
No.
No, I don't remember having been, in my experience.
Public hearing on certain day, if you publish one, it is going to be, it'll be on the agenda which will get filed for that event.
Additional questions, comments? Oh, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry, thank you.
I just raised my hand.
Oh, okay. I didn't sit.
All in favor?
You didn't hear that?
I didn't hear her raise her hand, y'all.
So we'll have to follow the process for the public hearing.
Yes, of course, it will be in the papers.
So, thank you. Tony, we have 10 minutes.
Okay?
Sure. Is everyone okay if we move on to the administrative officers' report? Sightings director?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The report through January 20 of this year is an estimated surplus of slightly over $1 million. We have an $800,000 allocation for our fund balance in the budget, which effectively means that at the end of the year, this projection indicates we would have a slight increase to our fund balance of below $200,000. So that would leave us at about 14.6% of our annual expenditures for our fund balance as a percentage of those expenditures. Due to increasing rates, the interest income is projected at $270,000. And so our current earnings are about 5.5%. Our intergovernmental revenues projected generated surplus of about $240,000. This is a grant that we received based on our revenue sharing account at the state of Connecticut. I am told that the, there is a lot of discussion about eliminating this grant in the coming budget. I know most towns have been on budget for this grant because it's really not known if you're going to get it until you see how the state performs. So I'm told it's on the chopping block. We don't budget for it anyway. So it doesn't really affect our budget process, but in fact, funds that we receive. So those are sort of our highlights on the revenue side of the budget. On our expenses, the one thing to note, police department budget has reimbursed it. So the way that we used to fund the SRO when the SRO was a police officer was that the Board of Education, Woodbridge Board of Education, would reimburse the town for our expenditures relating to that police officer because the police officer was at the school pretty much 100% of the time. Because the school has changed the way they provide that service, the good news is they're no longer paying. The, it's, it's total is about $125,000, $130,000 in total. But we're no longer receiving reimbursement. So as a result, there's about $90,000 in the police budget that will not be reimbursed from the school. I'm not sure if it'll be a problem because there's been a lot of turnover at the police, have a lot of vacant positions, they filled most of them, there are one remaining. So it may balance itself. But I just wanted to make that point, that, so keep an eye on that. There may be some slight deficit there if, anyhow things go with overtime this year. So I just wanted to make that point. Secondly, in retirement, that may disappoint in the past, but that continues to be a surplus of retirement. $175,000, we do have a healthcare issue, coverage changes. So that is about $100,000 surplus in benefits. And finally, in March, we should be receiving our portion of the surplus of $451,000 for the 2023 operations. Those are sort of the highlights of the draft this year so far.
How are we doing in the third room?
Pretty good. We've used a lot of material. We have a slight, slight, slight deficit in overtime in public works mostly because of ice. We've had the cold out of ice. We just had obviously a recent storm, so although it was during the day, a lot of.
A week there.
In a week there. So not too bad, but we've. Yeah, yeah. I do what I can. But we've used a lot of product, so I'm sure that's pretty depleted, but not bad. Not bad so far.
Great, great.
All right.
Is there some questions? Tony?
Yeah, good, thank you. Do you want to continue your question or we? So the first funded request is line item transfer number 2324-12, amount of $5,000, the Parks Department. And that's a cover shortage due to some repairs in the park. It's covered from part-time seasonal employee.
Does anybody have any questions on it? I'll start off by making the motion that we approve line item transfer number 2324-12 in the amount of $5,000, covers shortage in the equipment parts budget in the Parks Department.
One second. I just had a quick question. Tony, you're saying it's from part-time seasonal, is the season winter or spring?
Oh, sorry, that's a good question. So it's from the Parks budget. So Parks has seasonal employees from March through October or November, depending on the year, depending on the need, depending on the roof. So Adam anticipates a slight surplus, some funds remaining in that account, so.
So from earlier?
From earlier in the year, yeah. He had difficulty finding seasonal help as he indicated in his budget. That's one reason why he has surplus there.
Questions? All in favor? In minutes, thank you. Next is line item transfer. This will be 1520-00 slash 55140.
Answer 13, 2324-13. Yep. That's what you.
That's what you said, yeah.
That's just.
Thank you. 242, I'm sorry, 2324-13 in the amount of $12,673.
Correct.
Is there a motion before we have a discussion? Is there a motion with regard to this line item transfer? I'll make a motion that we approve line item transfer number 2324-13.
Let me see, 24.
2324-13, $12,673. And this is from Brad Parsons for the unanticipated work in the pool filter room and the overtime wages which we need for onsite monitoring of the pool.
I'll second it.
Tony, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
It's pretty self-explanatory, Derek preparing the pool for reopening. And there's, you know, there's some expenses that were related to that. It is some repair work in the pool area.
Can I, I'm almost ready to ask, how is the pool doing?
It's actually doing pretty good.
Is it full of water?
It is full of water and it's staying full.
As far as the pool is concerned, it's doing well. It doesn't mean there are additional challenges that we run into. But right now, but from a pool standpoint, it's holding the water.
Mika, will we be talking about our vision for the pool?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, a good time for us to do that might be next week when we look at the budget.
Okay.
It would probably be an ideal time for us to do it.
I have a question about, off the property, while there is construction in the summer, is that pool going to be available for use?
It remains to be seen. And generally speaking, if we're not able to use the building and we're not able to function from a camp standpoint, chances are not.
If that's the case, is this?
This is already done?
This is, he needed to do this as a result of the other issues we have.
Okay, thank you.
We are at a point where we need to talk about the pool as a whole. Any other thoughts, questions? All in favor? Thank you. I think at this point in time, it is 6 o'clock. It is time for our public comment portion of our agenda. And I'll start by seeing if there are any members of the public who wish to step forward for public comment. Seeing none, I will turn to Allison, the clerk, and ask her, the meeting clerk, and ask, have there been correspondence that we should be?
Yes, there's just one email from Sue Torgerson, and this will be included in the minutes. I am wondering why the minutes before this meeting on February 1, 2024, did not include the discussion with solar farm being proposed on the golf course. Mika stated that the conversation about housing would be discussed tonight due to the time it took for the solar farm presentation, but it is not showing up on the minutes or on the agenda.
I did have Allison respond to her with questions specifically from a response standpoint. And the first question, Allison, I'm sorry again.
Did not include the discussion of the solar farm being proposed on the golf course.
And we weren't proposing a solar farm for the golf course, so that's, that's the reason it was, that's the reason behind that. And also explained obviously that the meeting happened from today to the 28th to give us more time to discuss the, so we did respond to it. We just wanted to let you know that we responded. I believe she also had sent an additional email in with regards to a number of questions as relates to the country club.
Yes.
And those we will be prepared to address at that time when we, when we do get together or before, if it's possible. But I just wanted, that wasn't as part of a request related to this meeting. That was just a general question.
Can I just ask for clarification? We have minutes in our consent agenda for January 10 and January 30, but this is a question about minutes that are not in front of us today?
I assume, I assume she meant the January 30th meeting. I'm reading her email verbatim and it did say February 1st in her email. My assumption is she's referring to the January 30th meeting.
So we didn't meet on that.
That's right.
Okay. Some of the others.
I'm just checking.
Okay, thank you.
And there is no other correspondence? Very well. So with that, we will go back and we will ask Oliver and Christina if you'd be so kind, you know, to see if you would, just wanted to, we started to have some discussion as relates, please. It relates to the barn and it was brought up that we might be, we might want to hold off and see if we can have the architectural committee of the TPZ look at the structure to assure that it would be appropriate for the property. So I felt that maybe you could explain a little bit about what you're doing just for the, so we, we understand better, I appreciate it.
Sure, so what we are hoping to do is to add a barn onto this property. What we're looking at is a structure that is 45 by 60, so a fairly large barn so that it can house a lot of the equipment, tools, tractor, and things out of the elements. Currently, we have no shelter in place for any large equipment, which is kind of the biggest investment that we have in, in the farm. So that was the onus for building a barn. As we do that, we would also like to have an accessory dwelling unit as part of the structure short term that might provide possible housing for a farm employee, which is always kind of a limiting factor for being able to keep and contain good people. Long term, it might be multi-generational housing. So that maybe someday my youngest might want to farm and I could stay there. Or if our, my in-laws or my parents needed a space, we might be able to kind of support each other and continue to farm on the property. And since we are under an easement, we do need all of the easement holders, the town, Woodbridge Parks, and the Historical Society to approve the structure. As far as the easement is written, I, this is the first time we're building this type of structure, but for other things that we've done on the farm, I think it's just been the Board of Selectmen who has given approval. I don't know, since this is a different structure, what the, what the process is, but please let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah, the understanding as far as the easement is concerned is that it is the Board of Selectmen, it's also the Parks Association and the Historical Society. And when we had a conversation with Oliver, we indicated that you've already gotten on their agendas, so to speak.
Yes.
For later on in the month.
Yeah, they will meet next month, or next week, sorry.
So we were considering it and we're, and obviously what we're looking at is whether or not your design does not detract from the historical and architectural character of the property. So you were good enough to give us some pictures as far as you don't have a definitive design at this point in time. Obviously, we've got to go to the building process in order to, in order to really finalize on something.
Yeah, the general design you can see from that, but in terms of what like the outside materials are, we haven't decided if it's darker wood or lighter wood, but we're planning for it to be wood. The roof, we would like to have the metal from the standing seam metal roof, which is found in a lot of both current or, you know, contemporary and historic agricultural buildings. Not necessarily from the 1820s when the house originated, but I don't know that it has to be necessarily an 1820s barn that we're building. And we don't know exactly what the colors are, but I did want to give you, I don't know, were you able to forward the?
Yeah, they have all the pictures. Everything you sent, they were, for them, they were viewed, yes.
Yeah, so some of the detailing remains to be seen, but we're looking at a arm.
Questions?
I have some questions. I just jot some down. So first, was or is there pre-existing structures that will need to be removed to accommodate this?
Yes, in the site plan, there is a little shed that we have twos in right now. And that we will get planning or zoning permission to relocate. I think we'll keep it just so that we can have the tool store for all the building in, you know, all of that. And in terms of other existing structures, I have had many people from the town tell me about what they remember being a barn on that property. I don't, I haven't seen any photos of it. I think it was taken down in the recent history, maybe in the last couple of decades. But certainly before, I think, 2008, which is when the easement was, or it was not included in the existing structures that were detailed in the easement.
Thank you, that was one of my other questions, is if there was a barn historically. I know at my house there was and now there's not. And so this could support the historic nature in that context. Okay, I think I'll.
Cut in, I'm just curious as to the location of the previous barn and your location of what you're proposing. Is it similar, is it the same, is it different, is it?
It's similar, we're, I, I, someone had come to the property who said that they grew up, you know, coming over and they walked me to where they thought it was, which was on the other side of two maple trees, a little bit to the east. There are maple trees right in the center of the property. And so we're proposing to have it be a little bit, or sorry, a little bit more to the east. And the other barn might have been a little bit more to the west. I do sometimes run into a brick or two in the grass. And so I'm wondering if that was left over from the demolition of that project, but I can't tell. but I can't tell exactly where the, you know, the foundation was or anything.
Christina, would adding the ADU require any changes to the septic or, I mean...
We have talked in a preliminary sort of way to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District, and they have recommended that we either need new septic or we get hooked up to the town sewer line, which comes on North Pease Road. Our house is not currently on the town sewer, but I think we would preferentially look into that option.
Thank you.
So I had just had a couple of kind of process questions. Whether this, so you don't have an application in front of TPZ to look at the ADU and the square footage and all that yet?
No, we've talked to my husband and our, the third is here with me, Andrew. They went to talk to the zoning department and have also spoken briefly with the builder, or with the building inspector.
Chris.
And with Bob. And so they are, they have started to give us preliminary advice as we've gone about that. But zoning had told us that a substantial, or that a portion of the ADU had to be at ground level, and so some of it we had designed on the second floor. And then Bob said that 100% of the ADU had to be at ground level, so we had kind of changed the dimensions and the design a little bit based on that feedback. But we don't have an application. I don't know that, I don't know that it's necessary, but I think the first step is maybe having it approved before we...
Well, that's what I was wondering, in what point we act. And, and so if it's going to, if it, if it goes to TPZ, it may go to Architectural Review. I don't, I don't know the mechanics of what they do. If it's a sort of A40G or whatever, what's the name?
Eight dash 24.
Eight dash 24 referral from us to them, then they would fully consider and come back to us, and at which point then we would give our approval based on her recommendation. I certainly would feel more comfortable with that process because I, I don't know enough about the architecture too.
All right, can I tell you, our building, Chris has specifically indicated that they can't move forward with anything until such time as they be approved.
Until we refer it, right?
No, until we approve, until the three entities approve that they, that they can move forward.
All right, and then the other question, yeah, the other question that I have about the other two entities because, and I said earlier, I remember attending this meeting where we allocated the funds to do this. That was a group effort to come up with the funding to purchase this restriction. And certainly the Amity Woodbridge Historical Society and the Parks Association have very small dollar amounts involved, and the town has the much larger dollar amount. But I would actually like to hear from both the Amity Woodbridge Historical Society and the Parks Association, so that the Board of Selectmen understands their point of view, assuming we're all going to be in agreement. But I don't know that, and I don't want to assume that they're in agreement. I don't know if you, you haven't been able to present to them yet.
No.
Okay. So I just feel like we, we should receive some more information before we act, but that's just my...
Any other thoughts? Questions?
The motion tonight sends us to those other committees?
Yes, well, we don't, we don't, the motion for that to happen, that has to happen. What it does is it, it provides Christina with an indication that we've approved, they're pending their approval.
Pending their approval?
It's, everything is pending full approval. It's our approval, if we can't get the other, if the other two don't approve, then it can't go forward. So our approval is, is for all ten, it's a process.
But they need our stance to be able to move on to look at this, is that what I understand?
Chris would not, would not have planning and zoning look at it unless the three entities are approving. Just approve it, say it's okay with us, we have easement, we're complying with easement. We're saying, yes, we believe it could go forward, then they need to have ours.
Does it have to be a unanimous approval of all three entities?
All three.
And then Jerry, can I ask a question? Let's say I went through and then TPZ in their review said, oh, we're changing something. Then we, it'll be materially changed and we won't have, shouldn't we be last in the process?
No, I, I don't, I don't know.
But like it changes the, the sort of look of the...
You asked a very good question earlier, and the question was, I don't understand the process. And what are we giving tonight? Are we should be going first? Should we be going last? Our enforcement office has determined it's up to P and Z to go first, and I think that's an appropriate decision on our part. And now the Board of Selectmen either have, either could approve it tonight, could not approve it, could deny it tonight, could approve it, or just not act and decide to wait. And the question is, what do you need to know in terms of having the ability to act on this? Your question about, so you don't have the expertise to be able to do this. And I think that's for each individual board member to make his or own decision, whether they feel that they can act on it tonight, you may agree with Sheila, you may put it off, you may deny it, or you may say, no, I think, basically, I am going to rely on planning and zoning to make the technical decisions as to whether this is appropriate for the whole property, whether the size is appropriate. And we're just saying, yes, it's a good idea, and we want the applicant to be able to move forward with the process. And you can do it tonight, even if you feel you don't have all the expertise, you may feel you do have the expertise. But there's nothing that says that the planning, that Board of Selectmen needs to have anything unique to act on this application, except for your own individual feelings of whether you can approve this one or not. Sheila says she's not prepared to do it, so you say go.
Well, I also, I would like more information about the materials, because you gave us a range of options that you're looking at, you're still in a planning phase. When you decide, then we have a real sense of what it's going to look like.
Well, I, we can certainly give you that when we do decide. As far as the way the easement is written, I do think that it, it says that we are able to build a barn as long as it is sited and designed so as not to detract from the historic and architectural character of the property. I don't think that that means that it needs to go through design review. And I, I think having an idea, I, I guess, not having done this before, I'm not sure exactly what level of detail the members of the Board of Selectmen and the other organizations are supposed to be involved in.
There's no standard. This is the first time we've done this, as far as I can read. Granted, it's up to the board, it's up to each, each, each of the three entities to say, we have enough information, or we don't have enough information. And it's really not a rule that we're all complying with, you're just making a decision based on your, on your instincts.
My view is, trying to put myself into your situation, trying to do it, you know, it's chicken and the egg. Seems to be the type of thing, it's like you've been going to where you would normally do to build a structure. They said, well, you can't come to us until you get the approvals. So until you get the approvals, you're not able to do what's required in order for us to have final design. Is, is kind of where I'm at in terms of it. So I'm not sure if maybe what we want to consider is a contingency on, on audit approval saying, yes, we, we approve it based on what we understand, like you said, you're building a barn, and you described it, and you described the materials you're going to use. But there is a process. I feel like we do need to trust the people we put in charge of this type of thing. It's not my area of expertise to know exactly what a barn, what barn fits the criteria. I do feel what you've presented is consistent with what the, what I read is applicable. So my inclination is to move forward, but I do understand the concerns. And my thought would be to put a contingency on it if we can, Jerry, that says, but it is all contingent upon seeing the final design prior to it actually being, being designed. That gives you, that gives, hopefully, and I don't know if that gives, well, see, thank you.
I don't know if that's going to be enough for Chris and P and Z to say they're going to go forward with it. They're going to say, this is really not a...
How can she get a design if we don't?
But what if we refer it for review in that process?
But you can't, you can't do that, then. You have, you could take action or you could decide not to take action tonight.
But let's say we take action and approve it.
Yep.
And then for some reason, let's say, wood materials cost skyrocket, and you have to put up vinyl or something like that. And we don't feel that's historically, you know, relevant. Would we have, is there another system in place where we could say, you know, we do support you putting a barn, but we don't want it, but we don't think it aligns on it being vinyl? That, that's it. Once we approve here, there's no opportunity to re...
No. Once you do it, you've approved it, and if you like.
And then it's up to our town apartments.
So I, I would think that the Amity, the Woodbridge Amity Historical Preservation Society, and Sheila, I'm curious to hear what you think about this. Would be more of the experts on that subject matter? I know they were, just speaking with my house, they had parameters put in place to maintain the historical integrity throughout our restoration. And actually requiring wood siding was, historical frontage was one of them. So I'd like to think that they could keep, that they would be the experts with that. But I don't know, what do you think?
I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I just think that if we can start the process by saying, so Jerry, so we have an ownership interest of some sort in the...
Well, we have the easement, yes.
Right.
And the question is, can we, is it appropriate to get an eight dash 24 approval? Because so many easements, not that we own, it's usually the improvement of town property. And I bet that this has never come up a mistake here, because referrals, they generally, when the town owns a property, any property is going to be approved.
Yeah, and this was unique when we did it in 2006, and there was a lot of discussion at that meeting about how unique that was. And this is really the first time it's coming into play. So I'd like to actually make a motion that we send it to eight 24 review by the TPZ. And, and that is signaling that we are very much interested in having this get done. We want to take it through that process. And let's find out, I mean, if it turns out, if TPZ receives the referral, if we do send it, and TPZ's, the legal counsel there says, no, 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 this can't be done like this, then we'll know. But this is a way to find out and to move you forward in the process.
There's a reasonable chance that they'll send it back and say, this is not appropriate for us to take any action because the town doesn't own it, you know, you have the easement ability here.
Can you tell me how they send things to Architectural Review, because that's a subcommittee of TPZ, right?
They just refer, usually any project that considers, in terms of structure, they, of any magnitude, they'll refer to Architectural Review.
And that's ultimately what I'd like. Those people are the experts, just from a personal standpoint.
But Jerry, if you're saying if they say because it's not town owned, then it's not in our purview, does that jeopardize this whole...
No, no, all they'll do is say, it's not appropriate for us to do an eight dash 24 review because it's not town property, it's only an easement. Now, they may say, yes, an easement, of course, if the town has an interest in the property and we actually have the right to do eight dash 24. I don't know the answer sitting here today, because that's a third, because we did contemplate when we were talking about this, that this particular project would need an eight dash 24. My own gut tells me is that it doesn't because it's not owned. But that is not sophisticated, legal, researched opinion. My gut says it doesn't, but that is pretty significant. Jerry, is it likely when they go to TPZ for review, that they would say at that time that we need an eight dash 24? Yes. If they refer it, you're saying, we want you to look at... Just in terms of the building, because they'll have to go to TPZ for building it later. Yes. So they might at that time say, this actually needs an eight 24.
Well, that's for us. We have to ask. It has to start here.
No, I realize it has to start for the request, but in their review, they might say that they need that, is what I'm asking. Oh, without you asking for it, they can say, hey, why don't we do an eight dash 24 on this thing? And so, yeah, then they come, come back to you, and you say, we need an eight dash 24, then you can get your lawyer to give an, and you don't need it. So I ask that in the interest of trying to move the process along. Instead of asking for that now, you know, if we can approve the motion to move this forward, it's going to get to TPZ eventually, and they can let us know at that point.
Yeah, and I, as I said, I think that Architectural Review stuff is really important.
Agreed.
Because there's an interest, there's an investment by taxpayers in this property. We just want to protect that.
Understood, agreed.
Is there anything you feel about the design that we're not protecting that?
I don't know enough about the design. I know there's a couple of different options. And with regard to where it's sited on the property, if it's viewable by, from the street or not, I don't, I don't know.
So the question is, I'm not sure that that purview of the Board of Selectmen, you've got a lot of guardrails in, you've got P and Z that are going to be looking at it, you've got the Historical Society that's going to be looking at it, you've got the Parks Department, the Parks are going to be looking at it. There's a lot of guardrails set up, and the question is, is it appropriate for the Board, and this is not my decision, this is yours, is it appropriate for us, the Board of Selectmen, to go into many of the issues that those experts will be looking at when they make the decision? You're just saying, complying with the easement requirement, or saying, yeah, we think a barn is a good thing, and then everybody else is going to be looking at it with some expertise to say, this is inappropriate here, the materials are not correct, this is not complying with zoning regulations.
For a historic property, that's, that's the piece that's there right here.
Mika, to your point of wanting to get the other two entities involved. And since you said it has to be unanimous on all three of us.
All three you have to agree on.
It sounds like we just think it's a good thing to have an easement for a barn. The Historical Society is going to be the one that's going to weigh in on the architectural aspect of the thing, not us. I mean, if we're just going to rely on some other expert, and the Historical Society would either say yes or no to that component, or they would rely on another expert, good.
That's why experts are for, right?
I agree. There's, a motion's been made, is there a second? Sheila made a motion that we send this to TPZ eight twenty, eight, eight 24? Is there a second?
Sheila, I really understand your desire to do that and respect it wholeheartedly. I think I'm going to defer to trusting the process of the Historic Preservation Society and not second that motion, that motion.
In the absence of a second, I'll make a motion to approve the building of the barn at 48 Center Road as per 4.8 of the Constipation and Historic Easement Agreement, pending the subsequent authorization from the Woodbridge Parks Association and the Woodbridge Historical Society.
Second.
Additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So I just give you, or I contact you about what those...
I'll present you with something that I, the minutes, the motions, everything that happens tonight has, has to be filed, and that will be your, yes.
And then do I file with you what their response is, or...
We'll be touched.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is Mr. Roy Sealy, am I saying it correctly?
Yep, Sealy.
Correct, so Sealy, thank you for joining us. And Mr. Sealy is here to provide an update as part of the connectivity grant discussion. This connectivity grant is specific to sidewalks, connecting, basically connecting the high school down all the way, I think, probably works, but basically it's...
If to connect the sidewalk down to the, this main campus is a component that stands in front of the library and a plenty component in front of that. It's been some time since we got the grant for this work, and so we thought with all the new members, that would be helpful for Roy to present the project.
I'm not sure where the best...
Might you just set this up?
Yeah, it's been some time.
I think that'll do just, that'll do very well there.
Yeah.
Now, from a camera perspective, do we need to get anything that's shown there?
Is that the only kettle that's on?
Nope, there is one right there behind, behind Jerry.
And then my only other, again, a technical question, do I need to sit at the microphone, or can I stand?
You can stand, as long as you're, you can articulate in such a way as that it can be heard pretty well, and we... And we have our technical person who will correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'll just see.
Yeah, it will actually help, it will actually help the, it will actually help the recording a lot.
I keep getting texts when people can't hear us.
That's a good point, so, thank you.
My name is Roy Sealy, I'm a professional engineer with Cardinal Engineering. We were hired by the town to develop the plans and specification to go up the construction on the town center sidewalks. As it was noted, the idea is to connect Amity High School with the town center and to the athletic fields that are to the west of the property. I kind of put some key locations here on the, there's an aerial photograph. Again, in the upper right is Amity High School. This is their driveway that the students tend to walk down. They then walk south down Newton Road, cut through the meeting house and the town facilities, and work their way over to the athletic fields and playgrounds, et cetera, everything that's to the west. There's a number of, there's a number of things here, there's the town library, there's the community senior center, the police department with the childcare and youth services department. You have the First Church of Christ, the town hall, public works, et cetera. So the whole idea of it being a community connectivity grant was to connect all this together. There was a first phase of the project that was really done just here in front of the community center. And this is just some existing conditions photographs. I'm just going to go clockwise, starting in the upper left. This is the town hall, existing sidewalk and the main entrance in the front. It's made of brick pavers with a concrete curb edging. The town is experiencing issues with the brick pavers. They tend to pop up with frost heaves, et cetera. And it was just a concern of something that was noted. This is the phase one sidewalk. The way it's imprinted, stamped, and stained, concrete sidewalk, made to look like brick with the detectable warning strips at the driveway intersections. This is just a look of the existing bituminous sidewalk that runs, this is the driveway between the library and senior center. It's a bituminous sidewalk. It has the existing condition, it's replaced, the section that runs parallel with meeting house with a concrete sidewalk. This is the intersection with meeting house looking east, and this is Newton Road. You can see there's a large collection of utilities and other items that, features that would possibly interfere with the new sidewalk, and it's something we had to take into account in design. This, it's not as clear as I had hoped, but this is Newton Road looking north. This is the driveway to the church, and the driveway to the school, and the crosswalk here. And I think it's been brought to our attention, and I assume to your attention, that the students tend to walk down the side of the road, and they don't walk single file, or they're out in the grass. But there's an issue with ponding here in the grass area on the side of the road. So they tend to, especially in weather like today, where they would be in the road and not, not off of the road. This is the existing sidewalk looking east. It's the same sidewalk as here, so you're standing in the driveway looking east. You can see it's a fairly narrow bituminous walk. And over here, again, this is just the existing condition. This is what we're trying to replicate, the stamped and stained sidewalk, with adding the light fixtures.
The connectivity grant includes the light fixtures?
Correct.
Thank you.
So to be clear, the stamped and stained, the final product, the outcome? Or are we doing those in this connectivity endeavor?
Well, what we did is, when we were first hired, the idea was just to put in concrete, plain, regular concrete sidewalks. That would be all the sidewalks. So this is the existing sidewalk as it is now. It's, I've termed it, so north is actually to the right. So this is meeting house, this is Newton Road, this is the driveway to the school. So the idea was this sidewalk would extend down parallel to meeting house to the corner, runs south down meeting, down Newton Road, and then connected to the doorway here. There's an existing bituminous walk that kind of cuts across the grass. And so the idea is remove that bituminous walk and put new concrete in. Put handicap ramps at the intersection, and then a concrete sidewalk up to the driveway for Amity, Amity High School.
Sorry, maybe I misunderstood Andrea's question, but I.
I'm getting to the answer, yep. Yeah, so the existing is that stamped concrete. So what we thought was, due to the cost estimate that we came up with for just using plain concrete, we thought that we would add into the contract and add alternate, where the section here, parallel to meeting house, would also be the stamped and stained concrete to match what was already there.
So just that one section?
Just that one section. It's about a thirteen dollars a square foot difference of price. So it could add up considerably if we were to do the whole thing. And the idea was that Newton Road, the concrete sidewalk would be more appropriate rather than the stamped and stained concrete. But again, it's something that we can look at, especially along the church property. I know there's some concerns with the historic aspects of that property. But it was still thought that the best solution at this point is to go with the standard concrete sidewalk.
Which side of Newton Road is it on?
It's on the east side.
Could you just quickly give me perspective as to, I'm sorry, I can't see where those buildings are. Here, I see town center sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just.
Also, I'll turn it this way, just so north is up, just so, so Newton Road.
Okay.
Newton Road.
Where's the high school, I'm sorry?
Yep, high school's here.
Over there, that's what I thought.
Right, here's the pond in front, this is their driveway.
And now could you just outline where you have each type of sidewalk again?
Right, so in the base bid, and this all depends on what the bids come in at, if there's money available, because we're at four hundred and eighty thousand, so we're just short of the four hundred and ninety nine thousand that the grant is for. So we want to make sure that when it goes out the bid, that we, they will have to come back to the board of selectmen for additional funds to build it. But if there's some extra money left over, there's a few alternates that we thought we'd look at. So again, this is meeting house, this is Newton Road. So this section in the base bid will be concrete, but there'll be that add alternate to match the stamped and stained.
Thank you.
Right, and then this would be concrete, and this would be concrete.
Can I just ask, I think you said Newton Road, the east side, but do you mean the west side?
Yes, I'm sorry, west side.
It's a little different.
Yes.
So it's going to be.
I understand that.
Right, I'm sorry, right, it's on the west side of the road. So we thought about the east side, because of the connection to the school, but because of the wetlands on this side that we would have to fill in along, you know, along the edge. And there's also the water mains directly under that side of the road, and all the utility poles on that side of the road.
Roy, is there already sidewalk connecting the old firehouse to, traveling down Newton Road to the library? Like sinking or connecting with the proposed?
No, there isn't any existing sidewalk here. There's the old firehouse. The only sidewalk is, as I said, comes here and connects in here.
To the library.
Based on potential future use of that building?
Yeah, there's, there for a parking lot and sidewalk there.
We coordinated this plan with the building committee who was working on the old firehouse. So to make sure that they're.
Thank you.
And we talked to the landscape, our protective boundary site plan. The idea would be that they would want to connect in to this sidewalk as part of that, make it all one continuous sidewalk and add to the connectivity. There's one thing I want to note, is that here on the west side of Newton Road, the topography is very, very flat. I don't know if any of you have driven there, you've seen ponding constantly every time it rains, from where I understand. And then there's the issue, when we build the sidewalk, we want to raise the grade for the sidewalk so that it's not in a ponding condition. And although it may not create more water and more ponding between the sidewalk and the church property, we're afraid that the perception was, even if it didn't create more ponding, that the perception is that it does. So what we've decided to do is add a series of yard drains along the backside, the west side of the sidewalk, with an underdrain, a perforated pipe underneath, to collect whatever water there is there. But then we looked at trying to discharge it, and because it's so flat, and there's a utility duct, a very large utility duct, running down the center of the roadway, we couldn't get a pipe across the road. And because Newton Road, this is high and it slopes down as you go to the north, we couldn't put an underdrain in and have it flow backwards, it would be too deep by the time we got back to the catch basin here at the corner. So working with Warren Connors, what we decided to do is add to the project a storm line down the west side of Newton Road, down to the brook here. And that way, we could stop two problems. One is the ponding here, but allow for other improvements to the drainage on the west side of the road, as well as, I think there's some ponding warrant that's said here at the street here. So the idea was, we could kill two birds with one stone, and stay, still stay within the limits of the grant, which we worked out around the law. And another little part of the project is here at town hall. I don't know if you're right here in the front, so if you notice, the concrete curb is in poor condition. So this part of this, we're going to replace, in the base bid, replace that curb in. But again, there's a series of add alternates. The first is changing this to the stamped concrete. The second is to replace the brick pavers in the front with the imprinted stamped concrete, to match the rest of the sidewalks and to eliminate the problem with the frost heave with the bricks. A third alternate, again, all the times where the bids come in, is the, the base bid will include new lighting just down to the corner with meeting house and Newton. Is to extend it along the remainder of this down Newton Road to the library, and be just adding just four more light poles. But the idea was, then this would all have pedestrian lighting. There is street lighting on the east side of the road, but we think that it may, if the money's there, then it may be a good idea to provide lighting the whole way.
Are there standards applied to those light poles, meaning restricting or reducing associated light pollution?
Well, they, they, these light fixtures will be LED, thirty eight watt LED, and they'll be similar to the light poles that are there now. And that comes to my fourth add alternate, is the original ten light poles that were put in in this first phase were one hundred and seventy five watt metal highlight, highlight fixtures. Number one, they don't make those anymore, and so we couldn't copy that. But number two, I've heard people complain about how bright that is. And so they would all, that alternate would be to replace those ten with the thirty eight watt LEDs. So the lighting is consistent, it's not as bright. But again, the idea is to illuminate and make it a safe pathway. So there will be some light spillage, it's not like a shoebox type that shines straight down, you know, they're lantern types, they illuminate out. But again, the idea is not to be as bright, but still provide a safe lighting situation.
Are the poles themselves capable of having any kind of brackets on, attach them?
They could, we're just copying the existing light standard that there is now, but we could add brackets, and we could look at, retrofit the existing ones and add brackets to those as well, if that's. I mean, are you thinking of just having banners? They're not tall, they're only ten feet tall, but.
But I was just thinking, it would be an opportunity for us to provide the center area with an identity of some sort, and give us some flexibility to do some of that, so.
We could certainly look into that and see what digital cost that would be.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the end by the town hall? You mentioned that you're talking about the little walkway from our front steps here out to the crosswalk. We have a sidewalk here on the side that's not connected, are you going to connect across the front?
We looked at that, and the grades really don't work out too well. It kind of cuts off, you know, the flag pole. We had presented that and met with Tony and Warren, and we decided that wasn't a good option.
So the students are going to come into town hall, or where are they going when they're, they're trying to get to the field, sorry? How are they going to, they're going to walk on the street to do that?
They would, yeah, walk through, where they walk now, the, now this project was the deal, just this here.
Right.
They actually go through.
Adding this one little leg of sidewalk between the two entrances wouldn't make much of a difference.
So they'll go, they'll take the crosswalk to the front of town hall, and then they'll walk in the street and then down there. And then down the stairs.
Yeah, they usually walk down the stairs and go that way.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate that it.
Is there a way to put an add alternate in to just continue that little piece, or is it really cost prohibitive to do that?
It's, I mean, it's a small piece, but again, it's just, all, if all we're talking about is connecting the brick walk with the concrete walk, you know, it's thirty feet, thirty five feet, it's not a huge difference. But again, it, it, we looked at it, if you, if you're familiar with the regular concrete walk on the left, there's a very large curb to hold back the grade. And then it's, again, it slopes up to, to the brick walk. It'd be a fairly steep sidewalk, and we extended that really tall curb around both sides to that grade. If it's not impossible, it can be done.
Yeah, for safety purposes, people do take this curb pretty quickly sometimes, and these are students, and they're.
It seems like you're so close to doing it completely that I kind of agree with you, it's just.
Very close.
It's just, it's right there, so.
If it's a choice between that or the fancy stamping and dying.
One other thing we considered when we looked at it was the, sort of the symmetrical look of town hall with the, you know, the pole, link pole, and the walk in the front, you know, the grass on the side.
Do you want sidewalk on both sides then?
Then we have like a big sidewalk on one side.
Well, but that kind of brings me to what I was going to bring up, which is Alice Newton Park, which is, to my understanding, a highly frequented park and used park that is accessed.
Okay, Chuchu Head Park, is that what we're talking about?
No, no.
Wait, no, no, the, the wooded park right there. That's what Church Park Association manages. And so I don't think there's a sidewalk that currently connects. And then there's also the, behind the church playground, but I, so, that I also think it's a fair amount of use. So not to go over budget immediately, but is there potential to connect the park? Just on.
The answer is, so I was joking when I said to Tony, you want sidewalk on both sides?
Yeah, but. Yeah, but actually there would.
So the main thrust and focus of the grant was traffic from the school.
Yeah.
Connecting to the main campus.
Well, to the, to the ball field, yeah. Is it, you're not.
Well, not just the ball field, they go to the library.
Yeah, some kids will do that, but it's the girls' softball, basketball there again.
Right, that's the main.
I used to do that.
I was going to say, maybe carry their equipment.
Yeah, this is great. It might be worth consulting with Church Parks Association to see if they'd be interested in.
Definitely, the other thing I want to mention is the timing. So it's our, our hope that we can do this construction over the summer, correct?
Yeah, so that's the idea.
The road is going to have, be compromised, we really don't want to do that during school.
Right. And I just wanted to go over quickly what we came up with costs. As I said, just the base construction as the base bid without all those add alternates is four hundred and ten thousand dollars. The grant, I think it's four ninety-nine, but there's also, that doesn't include the cost of inspection if you're going to hire us hopefully, but hiring or an outside firm to provide inspection, that would be probably another fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars. So that's why we didn't want to overload the original contract with what we're now calling the add alternates. So doing the stamped concrete, as we said, just in this area here, adds about thirty-five thousand dollars. Doing the town hall sidewalk adds another thirty-seven thousand dollars. Add alternate number three, the additional lighting adds forty-four thousand dollars. And then changing the light fix, the ten light fixtures adds another eleven thousand. So again, as the bids come in, we'll work with the town on choosing whether if any of these add alternates are appropriate and affordable within your budget.
This one, correct, John, ran it out. The grant's five ninety-nine.
Oh, five ninety?
Oh.
Oh, then we're all set.
That's a lot of stuff. I'm telling you, it's a lot of.
Yeah, why am I doing all these add alternates?
Well, have you, since understanding the goal of this connectivity, high school to ball fields, has there been any concern or attention to the parking on meeting house? And that, the, this, I don't know how, it's not, you know, drive the nose in parking. You can only access your car from behind the cars. Like there, if I'm, remember, there's no sidewalk where the cars nose in. And I have viewed that as a safety concern, especially when there's snow. So I'm just wondering, has the town ever thought about adding this on?
There were some, there was some discussion of previous board when the site plan was presented by the, the committee looking at the green, the, the grove. There was some discussion about it at that time. It was more discussing, do you remember, the one road, the one direction road? And, you know, some other strategies on how to slow down traffic.
But not, not with sidewalks, okay.
There's worse traffic coming on this road because anybody who's worked here or have used the crosswalk probably got to run down almost at least once, since they've been here, I've had to do it a few times.
Well, without the sidewalk, it doesn't, it doesn't look like a street. It almost looks like a driveway over there and I think that's where people drive, ride so fast.
Well, thank you. Your, no, this is very helpful.
As part of the process, we have to do a public information session, which we hope to do by the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, and if you also want to meet with the church.
We'll meet with the church separately.
Now I have copies of our cost estimates, I, I made a few copies, I can drop these off.
Yeah, just, yeah, just do it to me.
I had a couple of copies of the.
Actually, you can keep that house, that would be best.
So Tony, when was the board's selectmen, somebody will make a decision about these add alternates and then come to the final.
Right, the board's selectmen has to approve the final bid. Probably, right, probably April, like this.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Titan Energies and Green Skies Nonbinding. Hello, Mr. Allen Teff is here from Titan Gen.
Can you possibly hold on for like twenty seconds before starting, just because we need to do a quick recording swap here? Sorry, don't make me such a pest tonight. You will hopefully get our new equipment replaced next week.
That's bringing me back to what we used to swap tapes out of these.
Same thing. Let me know when that.
Just waiting on, wait for him to give the thumbs up. Once he does, we should be all good to go back here. Okay, thank you, folks.
Mr. Allen Teff from Titan Gen can answer some questions. And I'll preface this by saying, I do want everyone to understand what you have seen is not in any way, shape or form a, an endorsement on that. There's no, there's been no discussion with regards to this as a plan for, for solar, as a matter of fact, since the last meeting, what I've done is I've spoken with Mr. Teff and explained to him that one, one of the things we would like to do is take a look, a broader look at, at solar on a townwide basis and put together a strategy that really encompasses future and any other opportunities we might have for solar, so. But what this does offer us still is an opportunity for us to secure a, or submit, get a application for capacity submitted so as to reserve solar capacity for whatever might be done as we move forward with the, as we move forward or as we, as we do anything with that particular property. There were some questions mentioned about some additional properties that are there, different addresses we have that are kind of contiguous and they were reviewed. Mr. Teff could certainly get some detail or provide us some details if there's still some questions in regard to that. But what we're, what I'm very specifically interested in is, is leveraging our opportunity graciously provided by Green Skies to submit the applications, not only for the country club, which I think is very important, but to me, as, as importantly is, is the, is doing this for the transfer station, which we have looked at in the past and we have found to be somewhat prohibitive in terms, because of the build out that would be required. But what we don't have at this point in time is specifics as to what that actually is. And there might be some opportunities for us there and that certainly affords us kind of a, a space where there's almost no reason not to consider something at that location, it would provide us that opportunity as well, so. The LOIs have been updated, they've been reviewed, they've been modified to include language that the town requires they include. Town council also added language to make sure that it is as nonbinding as it can possibly be from our perspective. So there, there is little or no risk from our perspective in terms of if we feel for whatever reason that this is not an avenue that we want to approach. Please understand from my perspective, the LOI, if I were to vote to sign it personally, I would want to at least engage in a conversation with Green Skies, which I think is what their expectation is, to see what, see more about this. We're not there. That's something that we can do and we should do as is appropriate though in policy. This is specifically to see about getting it. And the urgency, the specific urgency with the capacity is that that can be taken by anyone. And once it's used, we get into a situation that we find ourselves in with the transfer station where there's a build out required and it might be prohibited. So, Mr. Teff, is there, if there are some questions for, for Mr. Teff, let's ask them, but, or for me, from that perspective, let's, let's see what we can do here. Or maybe we start off with, just so we can have a discussion and determine what action we take. Can I have a motion to approve the update of, no, that's wrong. Motion to enter into two proposed nonbinding letters of intent with Green Skies so that they may begin the application process for the Connecticut Step and Nestor as a ward and the interconnection impact study completed by the United Illuminating Company. So.
Do we have to approach the letter of intention or interest together or can they be separate?
We can, we can discuss, yeah, we can discuss that and they can be, yes, however we want to do it.
Okay.
So, is there a second? I'll second the motion. And now we can have some discussion. Questions?
The limit, the, uh, the limiting factor at the transfer station was three phases? Is that, the access to three phases, is that was the issue?
Correct, so there's single phase power that runs there. Three phases, you know, it, it's, it's a meaningful distance away where, you know, we can look at the available hosting capacity maps for the golf course and say, yes, as of today, you know, we can make some estimates based on what we think that would cost is pretty reasonable, it's, it's, you know, we don't know for sure until we do that interconnection application, get the results back, but likely the cost to interconnect to the grid and run that three phase, the distance it needs to go is going to be a lot higher. And since it's a smaller project, it's really difficult to nail down in advance what that project will cost until we have that, that variable locked in. So, you know, unfortunately, the only way to do that is to complete the interconnection application with UI. Have UI put, you know, their team on the project, come up with a cost that we can then reintegrate into the project cost itself, so like the panels, the racking, all the engineering, et cetera. Bring that piece into it and then make a determination if it has a positive financial outcome for the town to proceed with that project.
This, is, is there a three phase where this project could be located across the street on the Titcher Road property, is that here?
Um, it could very well be, I mean, I, I would imagine there's three phases on the street, I've never investigated it, but I, I think, you know, to meet this point and, you know, we have a date on the calendar, sit down, really wrap our heads around, where in town could there be other opportunities that perhaps we haven't uncovered yet? That could be folded up into a larger portfolio of projects or if nothing else, just ideas.
And is that something that you're prepared to follow through on before we have to know where we're going to go with this? I mean, I, me, from your perspective, I, I would just, I would like to see, you know, if we're going to start exploring this, where the options are for this to economically go for us as a town so that we don't just start making decisions, one piece of property at a time. I'd rather have that planned and looked at so that we have a, a real plan instead of just a one-off. Particularly, when I looked at the, the plan, it was just sketched out, I looked at the middle of a piece of property that if we're going to do development there, seemed to be that if you're going to build homes there, you know, that's, that's, you know, we ought to, we ought to, rather than, rather than just maximize our solar potential, I think we ought to look to optimize our properties, which is sort of a very different decision because one involves maximizing for one thing and the other involves what's our optimal use for a particular piece of property. And it seems to me that we're pretty far away from optimization. So I, that would just, my.
What, what I'll say to that is what we're requesting here does not preclude us from doing exactly what you just described in any way, shape or form. And in reality, the way I look at this is a very unique and, and positive opportunity where we know that there is capacity, or we, we feel that there is capacity and capability in an area where there's town property. And in town property that we, we are going to be evaluating, working with consultants to see what we want to do with, which solar could be a possibility in that. So it's an opportunity for us to reserve capacity so that that capability remains there where it may not, if we don't act. That's, that's what the opportunity is from my perspective. But please understand, did anything care and please, please, by all means, tell me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't think I could have been more clear with, with Titan and with Green Skies that we do not know what we're going to do with this property, we may need to walk away from this. And we, this is not a plan for the town, this is, whatever we do from a solar perspective, we'll have many discussions prior to anything that, you know, that's substantial that we commit to or that we agree on or something along those lines. And that's why I keep trying to keep this in the realm of, do we want to take advantage of an offer that's been made by one of our, one of our providers or, or a provider to take advantage of just saving some money and putting in, in, reserving capacity which we might, which we might want at some point in time. So it, I can't stress enough, this does not preclude us from doing anything at all with regard to sol, solar anywhere, including a country club at all. Or, or from doing nothing, or from doing nothing.
Out of curiosity then, why is fourteen point two acres specified in the letter of intent?
So that they can, so that they can provide us with some degree of.
Financial information.
Correct, and that's.
But that, we, I know this is nonbinding, so obviously that is nonbinding.
Correct.
Okay.
And.
But, okay, but the numbers would be based on having the equivalent amount of solar there.
These numbers would be based, but only, we're not, again, if we were interested in the proposal, we would be having this conversation. It's worth while having the, not that it's not, what I'm saying is it's, yes, you're absolutely right. These, if this is what we're going to do, this is not necessarily what we're going, could it be? Possibly if we decide, only if we decide and the town decides, the people decide that this is what they want, that's the only way it could happen. But in the meantime, should that day come, we don't have capacity, it's a moot point. So this can, this, in a sense, affords us the flexibility to work with a consultant with all our options available.
And I would just offer from, from my perspective where this is now, I mean, I, I'm treating this as, this is a fact finding mission really because at the end of the day, everything that's even been presented here is predicated on assumptions that have been made about cost to interconnect. And until you know for sure, it's hard to know what you're kind of setting yes or no to, right? So there's, like, when we're investigating sites like this, you know, it's, it's like if you were making a cake and one of your primary ingredients, you know, had an unbilled price tag and try to decide, well, do I want to make this cake or not? Well, I'm not sure what it cost yet to make the cake and that's usually a, you know, a deciding factor in most people's lives. So where I'm is, I just want to know what the cost of that ingredient is so I can help you guys kind of, you know, take some nice steps with this, knowing full well that there's other folks involved that are looking at the site and trying to evaluate. And as far as the layout itself, I mean, I, I come at this from a perspective of, okay, what's the ideal location for solar? I, you know, there's, however many other uses there are, I, I know that that's a part of it, I know they're factored in. But I wanted to give what, what I thought was short of using the whole thing for solar, right? Which would be completely unrealistic. Give kind of the maximum, maximum footprint of what could be a realistic array at this site. Preserving tree lines and not, you know, monopolizing all of it. It could shrink, it could grow, but, you know, again, there's so much left to be filled in in terms of, system size, where we go, how it integrates into the larger plan that the town has for that. And I, you know, I'm, I'm viewing this very much as, you know, we're, we're right at the base of the mountain still, you know, really getting that answer on the interconnection side would be very helpful for the effort of, you know, bringing something, you know, more fully baked to the town, that's really where I'm trying to get to.
In order for us, forgetting about the LOIs for a second, in order for us, for example, if we said, okay, let's take a look at what solar would be at the country club, what you would be presented with from my perspective would be. you would be presented with from my perspective would be a funding request and Tony saying, okay, it's going to cost us $30,000 to do a capacity or to submit an application for capacity at least in locations. And I'd like the board of selectmen to consider spending the $30,000 so we can do this capacity, which would then allow us to go into talking to solar companies about what we can do with solar. They've offered to pay for that. Their, their, the return that they're looking for is a non-binding letter of intent saying, okay, you guys are going to continue to talk to me at least to look at what this is, what this is possibly about. So obviously the reason that it's of interest to me is because it saves us money and provides us the information that we require in order, in my mind, to make a, a educated and a good decision as to what we want to do with our property.
You know, my, my optimism, the optimistic side of me says, yeah, you, uh, even just taking the transfer station as an example, because, um, you know, that, that site is, by most of the metrics I evaluate, which I, it's a, it's a good site, it's just the three-phase distance is, is the, the main, um, concern. I've been surprised before from UI, um, and other sources in terms of getting numbers back which are more favorable than we thought. So I, you know, I would just, I just put this board out, I didn't, you know, never meant to give the impression that the, the transfer station was completely off limits, it's just, it isn't accurate everywhere, it's, it's hard, it's hard to pin down and I didn't want to give an overly optimistic impression of that project until we had some better answers. So, um, and, you know, again, other sites in town too, I think, you know, evaluating those can certainly make sense. I don't think it would necessarily derail or, um, you know, hurt the cause of trying to reserve that, that hosting capacity sooner rather than later because, you know, I can, I can say from experience that that map, you know, there are projects, there are way more projects coming online than hosting capacity being introduced into the system. And having that reserved for your project and having that option available to you could likely prove to be pretty valuable over time. So if someone steps in front of you, what may have been a million dollars could, you know, become five million dollars and they're connected to the system and, you know, then you're out, you don't really have any options at that point. And I don't expect the average person to really, um, you know, kind of, uh, appreciate that fact right out of the gate because it's just, it's, it's just, you know, from a different world, it's the so, the solar world that you're sort of, you know, probably not used to dealing with. But it's, it's a real concern in, in that space and something that, you know, as we're trying to guide the town through, um, you know, I just like to stress this really important.
Can I ask a question just about timing? Because I want to make sure I understand. So the, asking about interconnection filing with the state, is that March 1st, 2024?
There's no deadline to, for interconnection applications, they're just accepted on, on an ongoing basis. If you want to put the project into the, the shared clean energy facility program, which is what would ultimately provide kind of the, the, the incentives and the structure for, for it to exist, that comes around once a year. So March 1st, 2024 would be if you were trying to, you know, if you had a fully baked project and you were interested, you'd be doing it now. The idea would be to try to move things in the direction of, um, a, a March 2025 submission, unless you decided to put the project in a different program.
Right, just so I understand though, so Mika, you've been saying that we would save money because they would be submitting an application so we do not have to spend our money just to get the information we need to then prepare something for March 1, 2025? Is that, do I have that right?
Well, that information needs to be obtained through the interconnection application and there's a cost to doing that, so.
Right, so the, the cost that you're going to bear on our behalf if we decide to move forward, you're going to do something and submit March 1 of this year or just whenever it's ready, June, July? What's the timing?
The timing to submit the interconnection application, that's just, you know, it usually takes about six weeks to get all the materials together to submit to UI.
And that's the concern is you want to get it in as soon as possible so we don't miss an opportunity.
Oh, so someone else doesn't do the same thing so that they're, that-
Yeah, no, I-
There's no way, there's no date constraint here in terms of-
Yeah, so what I'm trying to understand is, we want to receive information based on what we're going to apply for, then you'll run numbers, then there'll be a negotiation of where on the property, how big, and then that is what has to go in front of voters or a town meeting, all to apply to the program next March?
Once you have a sense for what costs are involved and once you have the capacity so you know you can do a project, at that point in time, you go through your process of assessing what you want to do.
Right, so the document that's non-binding right now will be negotiated after we hear back about the cost for interconnection? You're saying six weeks or so? I'm just trying to get a sense, broad sense of timeline here. When would we be negotiating? Because you, you've heard that we are contemplating having a consultant come in and give us some ideas-
Oh, it would be six, well, I would say from, let's say, you know, tonight you said, hey, let's sign the LOI, about six weeks of work to get the submission in and then UI, it takes about three to four months to review everything and then get back to you with the answer. So we wouldn't have that information or the, that space, I mean, the, this, everything would be in service to trying to gear up to about six months from now, having the interconnection costs ironed out, having what, you know, the financial outcomes for the town would be if you did this, you know, A, B, C. And if at that point, and Mika, we're setting to somebody, um, once we have a fully baked project on the table that says, hey, these are our costs, these are known, the hosting capacity set aside for us for this project, what do you want to do? That's when you'd have to start contemplating, okay, a fi, uh, um, a binding lease agreement and then whatever procedural steps like an H24 that you'd have to, um, do for, you know, for the leasing type project and things like that. So it would be relatively quiet on, on my end for the next, you know, four to six months once that LOI is signed, because then we're really kind of in a heads-down, um, you know, work mode with that and then wait and see with UI, uh, if that's helpful for-
Okay, two, just two more questions really quickly. So the hosting capacity set aside for us, you said, that's as a result of that initial step, uh, finding out the interconnection cost and getting in line for the hosting capacity so no one else can get in front of us?
Correct.
All of which could then be put into the process of finalizing the terms of this actually binding letter once we get to that point, right? Once we're ready to go to the town's people and say, this is the plan we're going to do. I have that right so far?
The only thing I would say is that in the cases where, uh, the project needs to be approved by town, you know, town vote, then typically that lease agreement, that binding lease agreement with the developer would call that out, let's say, you know, subject to town approval.
Yeah, so the non-binding does call that out.
Right, and, and, and the non-binding is this sort of trying to be as, as belt and suspenders in, in terms of non-binding as, as humanly possible, just so everybody's comfortable with, you know, you're not inadvertently creating obligations for yourself down the road.
Right.
The real commitment occurs when you executed a, a binding lease agreement with a developer and presumably you get that approval, you know, in the-
Can I ask one real question, really a superficial, silly question as I'm known to ask, but why do we need this? Is, is this UI required? Does the state require it?
UI requires that we have some kind of written agreement with towns to, to prevent developers from really, really doing this.
Because it's so non-binding to me, it really is not a meaningful document, it really basically says that we're going to have negotiations later on if you feel that we can do it, so I'm wondering why we need it, like you just said.
So just to demonstrate to UI that there's actually somebody out there who's looking to do something?
The only other question I have in, in this context right now is, if we, uh, the, once we're at the stage where we're going to get specific, I heard you say at the last meeting, I asked it a couple of different, different people asked it, address. And the thing that's in the non-binding document shows it right in the middle and it's 14 acres and it's connected at a certain place, a certain junction. That's the interconnection site that you're going to get stats on from the EOI, they're going to tell you, this spot on the map, when we connect to it is this cost. If we moved that to the other side of the property or across the street, the piece that's against the highway, do we avoid the whole thing? And I thought you said last time, yep, we might.
So you don't avoid it if you stay within the same parcel? So UI doesn't necessarily care, let's say you had 100 acres to play with and the original plan was to put it in, you know, the northwest corner or wherever, you could move it to the southeast corner, UI doesn't, doesn't, you know, doesn't really impact that.
Unless we change the interconnection point?
I don't think that you would need to do that at this site, I mean, and if, even if you did, the, the, the cost, you know, a couple hundred feet here or there, it's not going to swing.
Okay.
If you moved to a adjacent parcel, because I know that, and I actually looked into this, so that sort of pizza slice shaped-
Seventy wood field.
Piece of land that's wooded and, yeah, so, uh, a couple of things about that. The slope is too great to get permitted unfortunately, there's a lot of ledge there and it's facing the wrong direction, so wouldn't, wouldn't be an ideal solar site. I, because I did look at that and I thought, hey, if there's a, if there's a path, at least resistance, it's, it's always good to look, right? And unfortunately that would, that would be, you would have a very hard-
So staying with 50 wood field then?
Staying with, you could put, you could put it anywhere, as long as you stay within that, that same parcel, you're, you're fine.
And then in terms of the size, if we decided later on in the process that, ah, we don't want 14 acres, we want 10?
Much easier to shrink than to grow.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation.
But that's all up to negotiation later in the process and we're not at risk of UI saying, oh, you changed it, now you're out of line?
Right, so what I would want to do is anytime that we've ever gone back to UI with a request to make a project bigger, they get very, very, uh, unfriendly to that approach. Go, and there's, because there's nothing written in the rules per se that, that UI has to automatically void your, your application, but they have discretion in the fact that it's so sensitive because interconnection hosting capacity is at a premium.
Right.
You know, if you start rocking the boat too hard one way or the other, they could say, no, you're going to have to, you know, do this over. But if we stay within three to one megawatts, which I think is, anything below a megawatt here and basically, you know, you have a, you have a three-megawatt project here, you cut it down by anything smaller than a third of its current size, I think you're going to see the economics start to kind of crumble anyway, so I'm trying to keep it in that one to three-megawatt range.
But it is connected to 50 wood field, anywhere on 50 wood field.
Correct.
Okay.
What about, uh, we, in that golf course, there was a lot of the golf course that's actually was a usable golf course but apparently is in wetlands. Are you prohibited from being in wetlands and is that why you've avoided those?
Yeah, it would be very difficult permitting.
We could have a fairway, which we did have in the middle of wetlands, but not, but not a solar.
Well, if a golfer gets his shoes wet, that's a different problem than having a solar right underwater.
I, I don't think it's out of water, I mean, it just, it's-
Well, from, from a permitting perspective, the state's going to look at that and they're, they're going to, they're going to make you move it anyway. So, you know, um, we're trying to avoid anything that would create future problems with permitting and, you know, we've been through this enough times where, you know, the state, the site and houses are very sensitive to these things and, um, we're going to have, I mean, there's going to be a lot of work that needs to get done studying this to make sure that, you know, like the, the town wetland maps are accurate and things like that, but, my best advice is to avoid wetlands as much as you possibly can.
All really good questions, all things that I think we'll have to review again, so it'll make us more familiar with it, so appreciate the, appreciate everybody's input.
I'd like to sit on, um, point of clarification and kind of pay you back off of what Sheila was saying. When I consider that and I look at what is written here, I'm kind of viewing this as the location, the address, the acreage, everything was picked as sort of a model. Let me model what this project could look like to move forward. And so is that the right way to look at that in this contract? That none of those things, you know, the acreage, I mean, granted the economics change as you change that, um, you know, changing the address, but if all of this is really just a model to let us see what this is like, what we're doing here is finding that information and reserving our capacity for whatever we choose to do in the future.
Correct, I mean, we have a huge amount of flexibility with this site given its size and, you know, uh, you could, you know, you, you could go five megawatts more or more on this site, but I was trying to strike that balance between, you know, what's, what looks like the most usable space, um, you know, how do you, how do you put it together so your project costs are low, interconnection path is, is easy? But it is purely for, I would say, I don't want to say demonstrative purposes because, you know, like thought, you know, real thought went into this, but there's flexibility there in terms of what ultimately would happen.
Is the cost associated with interconnections, let's say, transfer station, a one-time, like infrastructure investment cost? So would we have a sense of the financials and economic viability of that over decades? You know, so like there's this upfront burden of whatever relatively higher cost of connecting to phase three, but over the long term, that cost will be offset by, by X year, we'll recoup those costs?
Well, so the developer would cover that cost, it would be wrapped into the-
Into the, okay.
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, basically be amortized out through the project's life.
And just to make sure, I know I asked this, our version of this last time, but say we, we don't want an array, is this, at the country club now, is this the only way we can ensure that the possibility of solar in any capacity exists? So understanding economies of scale, but there's a commercial building, is this the only way that building could get solar on the roof or a, a car canopy area can be established by having this connection reserved?
So this is specifically for what we call front of the meter system?
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, so behind meter, let's say there's a business in town.
But that's a whole different-
Yeah, that kind of hosting capacity map issue isn't, isn't an issue because the power is being consumed on site, but if you're pushing, you know, megawatts worth of power back onto the lines, that's when UI needs to get involved and, and, you know, manage that so you don't have blackouts and things in town.
And Mika, my final question pronounced. If I understood your response to Sheila's timing question, I heard you to say that in about six months' time, we would begin the process of binding arrangements.
You would be, you would be, you would have the information at your fingertips to then decide, okay, is this interesting enough to take it to the next step, which from a contracting perspective then tees you up for, okay, if you did want to move forward with the project in some iteration of it, you would then have, um, you know, that, that lease agreement that would get executed, certain provisions in there, you know, to make sure that, you know, all approved, necessary approvals are met. But that's really kind of where the rubber hits the road legally and contractually for the next phase of this. So my hope would be six months or, or sooner, I can come back to you and say, all right, if you have the results back from the interconnection study, we know all of those costs, we know what hosting capacity's there, uh, you know, I'd give you sort of a clean bill health or otherwise for the transfer station project and then be able to dial in better for the, for the country club. You know, and I would imagine in the meantime, you guys would be continuing on the path to, uh, better articulating what other, um, projects might make sense for the country club and we could maybe, you know, merge these efforts together to say, okay, this is the approach that we have intended for residential or, or commercial, et cetera. How does that, you know, integrate to what we have here? And then, you know, that conversation could go any number of ways, um, but ideally I would come back here with more better information for you all to then say, okay, what's next?
So Mika, you're comfortable with that timing in the context of our proposal, our consultant in that process?
Right, and it's not as if there is some sort of deadline associated with the process of doing what Adam is suggesting as far as the leasing requirement is concerned. If that takes us another six months in order to put in, in order to develop what we want, that's what it takes. So far, Green Sky and Titan have, have indicated they're, they're going to work with us in that, in that regard, so it's, it's really, so from a timeline perspective, it's still what we said as a timeline from, from the perspective of working with the other consultants on any other options that may exist on the country club and things of that nature. Again, the, the priority here from my perspective, the urgency, if you will, is specific to reserving capacity so we can have those conversations and identify if there are some opportunity, if there is some of this- if there is some desire for us to utilize. And for example, what you mentioned, if you're going to use canopy or something like that, you have the ability to do that.
Can I ask just a quick question about who's doing what, right? So this Titan and Green Sky together are, part of what we're trying to do is get this capacity, right? But the capacity is going to be tied to a deal with Titan and Green Sky, no one else?
Well, it would be tied to Green Sky, it's not, not Titan. And if...
But you're submitting it, is Titan submitting it or Green Skies?
So Green Skies will ultimately be the company that would be submitting it.
But you're going to do the, the work that's going to get done, which we're very interested in you doing, is being done by Titan to help Green Sky put in the application. But then we're bound to them and the location.
So the interconnection capacity stays with the property?
Okay.
Yeah, so...
So you could get in line to get that capacity, and then potentially, if we needed to, get a different vendor instead of Green Sky?
You could. I mean, I'm sure Green Skies wouldn't be particularly happy with that outcome. And that was, you know, part of the process of...
Well, they'll negotiate, that's right.
Yeah, and that was part of the process of running the RFP to try to figure out, okay, who's the best, most qualified vendor with the best pricing, try to move forward with this. And what I see is a lot of vendors now, given that hosting capacities that are premium, good sites are getting fewer and further between, I would say, in the state. That, you know, developers willing to do things today that they probably weren't willing to do like five or 10 years ago.
So they'll be motivated to negotiate with us, and we'll get the terms we're looking to get. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes. It's a big position to be in.
It's also a motivation behind possibly them making this offer again.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I think, any developer that's been through the Muni procurement process with projects like this, especially ones that are on kind of high-profile sites, there's kind of a cost of doing business or a cost of entry to these sort of projects. And the willingness is there to, to pay for that. I think as long as everyone's working in faith to try to come to, you know, you know, a reasonable agreement at the end of the day that works for everybody at, you know. You'd have a good partner in Green Skies. I've worked with them before, you know, large municipal projects or something that they're, they're very good at doing, so.
And then potentially, we'll have a consultant that is working with us directly. So if we're, we're able to get the timing of this to work out so that our consultant does get a chance to weigh in. And if our consultant comes back and says, oh, there's a bunch of other options you should be considering, we could walk away from this.
Right. And I've made that very clear in the RFP itself and at the walkthrough and with, you know, with Green Skies in particular, that this is a process that's in, in flux. You know, it's, and, and just one note on the timing, because I think Mika touched on this, but I'll just echo it, that that six months is really just, as we're going through the process on our end, you know, if you need eight months, if you need nine months, et cetera, whatever it is, because you have other efforts ongoing, you know, you want to wait until we can fully integrate everything and want a conversation, that's fine, too. I always try to remain, and help my clients remain mindful just of the, the, the cycle of the incentive programs that come around, and then work accordingly around that.
And was there a two-year expiration of this?
For the interconnection.
For the interconnection.
Yeah, and we can apply for extensions.
And we get the interconnection, not the debt you submit. It'll be a while from there.
Yeah. And I would just say that we can, if the process, because quite frequently, these things take longer than two years. So, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't be the first sign. We can apply for extensions on that, but, you know, there's cost involved. And then Green Skies will probably just have to make a judgment call, you know, based on where things were at, at the time, if it was worth extending or not, so. David?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm sort of uncomfortable with the sort of one-off nature of our considerations. I would rather have a solar plan, a strategy first, that we could then optimize rather than just maximizing a particular strategy for specific spots. You know, I, it would, I would like to see us have the opportunity to look at, you know, secure the option, secure the space that we wanted to. But to look at more sites, I mean, I think that's perfect that we've got an LOI for the transfer station as well. But based on solar strategy, so that we could say, well, this, this property has this advantage. What's the optimal use of that property from the standpoint of the town relative to other properties that would have a different number? And give us a chance to really decide whether we're putting solar in the best place for us.
But we have, as a matter of fact, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I feel that's exactly what we need to do, is put together a strategy. And that's, that's more holistic. That certainly encompasses much more than just this particular property or just the, or just these two properties. Totally agree with you. I think that's something we need to do. I think that's a responsibility we have.
Yeah.
It doesn't preclude us, that doesn't, this doesn't preclude us from being able to do that. As a matter of fact, what it does is it puts us in a position so that if we do that and we find that we would like to do something, we've done the due diligence and we've taken the proactive approach of having reserved something we want. And as, I think, I made it really clear, if we find that this is not something we want to do, that's not, that's not a problem. So I do feel very strongly, we need to, we need to take a more complete approach from a solar perspective. And, and we intend, we're having a couple meetings, there will be a working session specifically for us to start that so that I can come back to the board and I can say, okay, here's some of the things we're discussing. Now give me some input in terms of where we should go, what we should do. But at least we'll have some, we'll start that process. And we'll continue that process. And that, that, you know, that may be a process that takes us a year. But in the meantime, we've got something that we may need should we decide that this is something we want to do.
Mika, I appreciate that. If I may, just express the hesitation I have regarding the country club and this, and this approach is, will it guide or influence our work with the consultant? Because we've made this first step, because it's an idea or model already presented to us that may have great economic value associated to it. And I wonder, and I, I think I've said this in one way or another, but what if these 14.2 acres, for example, were put in a carbon market program, set aside to not be, to let regenerate? And we can get payments for offsetting carbon emissions in that regard? And how does that compare? And, and so my fear is of pigeonholing us. I understand you've said you haven't, but can you...
Are you, is that so much?
Yeah, no, you're fine.
I don't think you're giving us enough credit.
Okay.
We will do what we feel is the best, is in the best interest of the town. That's what we're all here to do. That's what we're going to do.
But my fear is, like, you're already thinking the best interest for the town is solar on this property?
No, I'm thinking that should there be a need or a desire for solar, if we don't have capacity, it won't be an option.
I know you've said that.
So it's, it's, it's more along the lines, along the lines of how you started, and it's more, I think of it the opposite way. We're about to work with the consultant. If they were to come back and say, beautiful location for solar. You guys, you're absolutely crazy if you don't think about solar in this location. If we don't have the capacity, that's not an option. So we could, in a, in a sense, we could restrict our ability and that of the consultant if we don't take it. This, but in, in the thing that I, that drives me to continue this conversation is there's no risk. There's zero risk involved in this. There's only benefit and value from my perspective. We get information that we absolutely need as we move forward to make decisions. That's what this amounts to. And, you know, I, you know, I'm not articulating it, articulating it as well as I can. I understand the concerns and the sensitivities that are related to the country club. Absolutely understand that and recognize that, which is a reason I'm trying to give this as much time as we need to make people as comfortable as possible. But in this particular instance, we have an opportunity to reserve capacity for potential for solar with no risk. And legal, legal has approved, has said that. Financial has, has said that. I, you know, we look at it, you can read it, we've all read it, and we see that there's no risk there. So that's what's driving my persistence, if you will.
I appreciate that response. I was trying to express of my perceived risk in it guiding our approach to this process. But I also understand and hear your...
And what I, what I can say adequately, I'm not tied to this in any way, shape, or form. This is an option as far as I'm concerned. So in, you know, we, I started looking at solar months and months ago for a country club on my own, just in, because nothing has been done with the country club. So it's like, well, maybe solar is an option that people who want to keep it natural will appreciate in terms of the environmental aspect of it. And at least the town will get some benefit out of it, whether it's, whether it's helping us pay our bills or whether it's a land lease like this one is. That's how this kind of comes to fruition. It's more, why not look at everything that's available? Just why not? So that's all.
So, and yeah, and I would add, I think when we approached the country club process and what we're going to do there, we're going to want to get as much information as we can. And solar information, I imagine, would be part of that information. So we're starting that process now. Someone else would be paying for it. So we could find ourselves, if we don't go ahead with this, needing to spend our money on getting this information. So, but I think to your point of the carbon credits, that's additional information that we'll want. So I see this as free information that's key to making a decision. But we're not making a binding decision now on anything. It's just gathering information. Someone else is going to pay for it. It's not binding and there's no risk. So I, I could see this, you know, if we weren't having this meeting, we might have it later as part of the country club discussion to say, let's find out about solar, let's find out about the inter, safety cost.
And to be clear, if this were happening later, and I understand why it's not, I would feel less hesitancy because it would maybe align better with our consult. We'd already have a consultant in mind. And my fears of the timing would be less relevant. And I, yeah, and that's a...
I hear you, yeah.
You know.
Definitely appreciate that. And again, the only reason there's any sense of urgency is because there's something that's a bit problematic.
Understood. Yeah, it's challenging.
But then also the timing is, this will take time to get to. So, you know, we're going to be six months out from information. We don't have a consultant for three months. Then we're another six months out from this information. So I think moving forward on this now is an advantage in all these ways. So the timing to actually connect well. And I would just offer, too, that, I mean, I, I'm happy to work with whoever the town hires to ultimately put that master plan together. Because in my experience, those folks have broad expertise. And then maybe some, some more specific expertise in, in things unrelated to renewable energy. So if anything that I can do here with this information is helpful for that person or, or folks who come on board, I mean, that's, I would view that as part of, you know, part of my role here to, to help make sure that we have all these details articulated so that that person's job perhaps is easier, you know, to put puzzle pieces together.
I do think the biggest aspect of this that's likely to be kind of hot button is the location that we're seeing. And when people in the town get a look at that, they may make an assumption that this is it. This is what the board's likely just chose to do. So I think it's really key to explain that this can move around on that property and potentially get smaller, more to a greater extent, bigger.
I'd say, no, that's an excellent point. And it, it very much...
Because people freak out, perhaps, I tell you.
Yeah.
For those folks who are watching, for those folks who are watching, we'll say very clearly again, this is not a commitment in any way, shape, or form for us to do anything, let alone we're...
So this is just a conceptual.
But you're right, Shep, that's, you're right. When people look at it, they have a tendency to, I understand what you're saying. So we, we have a motion, we have a second on the table. Is there additional conversation, discussion on this?
If you're willing, I would prefer to give both letters as separate.
So who made the motion?
Yes, Steve made the motion, you seconded. So the motion is to enter into the two proposed non-binding LOIs? So you have to...
I can, I can amend the motion. We want to do...
If you're willing.
I'm fine with, yeah, yes.
So we make a motion to move on the eight-point hill property?
Eight-point hill?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Additional conversation? All in favor? Go opposed?
I don't think, additional motion to move on the letter intent for the country club property?
Can I just ask a question? There's an address, 1218 Johnson Road. You should correct that, Chris. You should be fifty.
I'll take a peek out.
I saw that, too.
The LOI says... There's something weird with our tax map. When you click 50 Woodfield, you get a whole bunch of properties.
Okay.
And you get 1018 Johnson, but that's a...
Yeah. We're going to make a note of that.
Please don't submit it with that, okay?
No, 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 no.
So I just...
Yeah, thank you. On the map, it shows 50 Woodfield.
Right.
The LOI actually does say, as you pronounce it, it says, 1018 Johnson.
We should contingent, contingent modification for certain.
Thank you.
Question with authority on the non-binding letter intent for the country club property?
50 Woodfield. Yep, okay. Any a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Additional discussion? All in favor? Question carry, all, all opposed? Question carries? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I very much appreciate the discussion. And I'm hoping folks are as comfortable as you can with what, what we're trying to do, so.
Thank you, Mika. I appreciate your feedback for me. I do trust so far. I am very pleased in trusting this board. And so I, I just don't want you to think my vote was reflective of any...
In that sense, from my perspective, I think that's fine. Thank you. All right. Next item is now upon the cemetery.
Just...
We have to do two more funding requests.
We have two funding requests for Tony, we got to go back to...
Transfers.
Funding requests.
Line item transfers, I think we go back to now.
Thank you. Might I ask the board's indulgence again for the folks who have been patiently waiting to present? Maybe that we can move to an agenda item that they're, they're associated with before we do the time you're going to...
Sure.
So that would actually be related to board's commission by number 15? The reason, just in way of an explanation that I said, 15 is because Mr. Dale Crouppen's in the audience here is a gentleman, if you recall, when I, when we held off on doing EDC, I said we had a consultant who was going to help us with our, with our team, with our group, with our EDC team, to develop some specific objectives and just do what's necessary, help us in terms of making the EDC much more productive and more focused in terms of economic development here in town. So this is Mr. Crouppen, he is our consultant from Rex, from another state. But before I get into what Dale's going to do, I figured we should have an EDC commission. So to that end, I would figure we should at least appoint the, the, go through the appointments. And, and that's what I'd love to do at this point.
So. Should we make a motion to reappoint, please? Make a motion to reappoint Brian Marazzi, the Economic Development Committee, term ending twenty twenty seven.
I'll second. No problem. Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? Very many. I take the vote on Brian Marazzi for reappointment. All in favor? None opposed. Thank you. My word.
Or there's some more, sorry, I didn't have it. I got lost in the change of. What's up?
Keep up with this, Steve.
Magnanimous Charlie next?
Yes.
So that's the nomination for Charlie Newt Jane for Economic Development Committee.
You have the year there?
Is that also twenty seven?
Yep.
For twenty twenty seven.
I'll second.
Additional nominations? Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Also, you might have to nominate the year on this.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, I'll make a nomination for Clifford Lynch.
Yes, commencing January first, twenty twenty four, ending December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
I second.
Any additional nominations? Discussion?
Can, can I just ask a question right in, in the middle of all this? And it's not particular to this person, that we don't. Do we know the party affiliations? Because as we're doing the entire board, we have to make sure of Mr. Weiner, the minority party representation. What's the number that we need here?
We're well above it in terms of it, but in terms of the folks who have, have right now, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Marazzi is a Democrat. Mr., Mr. Newt is a Republican. And Mr. the last, Mr. Lynch is also a Republican. There are nine members of the board, minimum of representations, two. Scott, Scott, uh, Scott R. Don is also a Republican, who is also on the board, his terms end up until two twenty, twenty twenty five. So did we, I'm sorry.
I second David's hit, but we have not, haven't voted. This is for Clifford.
All in favor of Mr. Lynch? All opposed? Or I'm sorry, motion carries?
Your name is.
Make a motion to appoint Richard and Brodeau to the Economic Development Committee.
Twenty twenty five.
Commencing, ending twenty twenty five.
Big composition? I'll second that motion.
Democrat.
Democrat. Any additional nominations? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries?
Make a motion to appoint Scott Hunter to the Economic Development Committee, ending, determining twenty twenty seven.
I'll second. Any additional nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
I think we have a discussion.
I, I'd just like to ask, since Scott is already on one commission. And, and his spouse is on two different boards, commissions for us.
Commission and committee.
Yeah. You know, I'd like to see us not being so narrow with this, with our commissions. We got into that habit before, having lots of commissions populated by small numbers of families. So that's just a concern that I have with this. I don't know exactly, I, I kind of looked at these people and didn't recognize where those conflicts may exist in the other commissioners.
I don't think that there are any that do, from that perspective.
In this, in this case, that to me, I, you know, do we really need to have people on two commissions? And do we really need to have two family members on four commissions, boards, committees, et cetera?
My, my sense on that is, depending on the qualifications, possible. You know, certainly from that perspective is the way I look at it. In this particular instance, however, I understand your point. It's something that we have discussed both with the candidate and with the, the commission or in general, beyond just the candidate. So it's something that we are cognizant of, and I do feel that it's something we can mitigate as time goes on. In, in the cases where it's appropriate. In this case, it may be, it may be very welcome for it. I know that the candidate is, is very open to, this is a position that I feel he's best to be for, and I feel very strongly about that. And so my sense is that if we were to think about making this, I don't think there would be a issue. That's what I'll offer.
Mika, just to address your point of expertise being more important than anything else. And to Dave's point of just trying to have broad representation. And I'm not sure if anybody serving on this commission is currently represented as one of our top ten taxpayers. But I do think we have untapped expertise in this town. Maybe we could solicit some engagement from some of those key taxpayers and contributors to our current economic standing. And moving forward, I would encourage the board and nominating committees to explore that option and be open to that option because they're a big part of our economic, current economic standing and our future, potential future. Just a general point.
I appreciate it. And I, my sense is that with dialogue, with continued dialogue, open dialogue, I think we can reach, reach those objectives. I think that we can indeed take advantage of the best resources that the town has to offer, or, you know, whatever we can. So.
And just one question I have. Would this fill all vacancies?
No, there will be one vacancy that we left vacant.
Okay.
Specifically for an additional resource that, that we haven't decided on. Yeah, one of, but one of the candidates whose terms expired is, is not being.
So I'm pretty sure this commission may otherwise be purely male. And.
Yes.
I don't appreciate that as a female. And I think there should be more than one female represented on the board line.
So here I was going to say a similar statement, and, and I think that there's an opportunity here because indicating that there's a position that's going to be remaining open. And I feel very strongly, women's voices in the room need to be heard here. So I'm in agreement with you here. If we can have more women's voices there, I think we're good.
Thank you. And, and I would just say, one out of nine is not, in my opinion, adequate representation of, in terms, yeah, of the commission perspective.
I agree with you, but for purposes, and I couldn't agree with you more. And frankly, that's why there's an open, open position from that perspective, because I do very much feel the same way. Keeping in mind, there are other commissions where there's a majority of women on those commissions as well. So, you know, it's, it's not due to that that it happens.
I understand.
And, but it's something that I candidly wish I paid closer attention to as, as we're going through the process. And can you can be sure that I will help?
Thank you. Well, we have to, so I can call it.
This is good. So we are, we've had the motion for Scott Hunter. And we've had the discussion. Is there anything else? I will call a vote, all in favor for Scott Hunter? All opposed? Motion carries? And I think there's no more?
I've got two more.
Really?
On EDC?
No, no.
One more.
It's on my list. So I'll make the motion to appoint Steve Francis to the Economic Development Committee, which is with a term ending twenty twenty five.
Second.
Steve Francis is a, is also a Republican.
Republican. Yeah, that's right. I'll second.
Any additional nominations? Any just, just, any just, oh, was there a second? Yes, you did, I'm sorry. And any additional discussion? All in favor? Motion carries? Thank you. We not. Any DC? Good start. I'm hopeful that everyone who's, who's been mentioned today will be able to make a special meeting on the twenty ninth of, of February for their first meeting, at which time Dale will present. And one of the reasons we asked him is so he can explain to the board why I think your involvement is so valuable and important for us going forward. And helps develop yourself, and then we'll get into the next step, which I know you'll be presenting as well.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I, I think I know a few of you. Also, Mika, the, with regard to the grant, should I just go over it?
Let's start with what we're going to do with EDC. Just give us an overview of what.
Do they have a copy of this? So you all have, I just put together a few slides. So, you know, you have a frame of reference. So my name is Dale Crouppen. Today, I'm representing Rex Development. So Rex is the Regional Economic Development Organization. It represents the fifteen town region in the council, South Central Connecticut Council of Governments. So long short of it is that state offers the councils of governments municipal services grants for various services that all the fifteen towns they need. So for example, there is a service that's already been utilized by the town of Woodbridge about grants. They don't write the grants, they basically work to build capacity for grant writing, review grants, pay review. They work with the staff, but they don't actually write them per se. So about a year and a half ago, I presented this idea to Rex to provide the same service on a consulting basis to the fifteen towns in the area of economic development. So the reason I'll tell you a little bit about my background, that it may be, you know, important to know based on some of the things I'm going to talk about tonight. So the last few years, I've been a consultant working specifically in capacity building and economic development, a lot on brownfields, a lot on redevelopment projects all around the Northeast. Prior to that, for twenty one years, I was the Economic Development Director in Hammond. Now, prior to that, I worked for an engineering firm doing a lot of grant work and production work as far as creating community projects. So the reason I tell you that, not just to say this is what I do, but because it might be relevant to the way you look at this presentation. So again, the service that I'm going to discuss right now is related to on-call services. The first thing I will say, it's free. And it's free until June thirtieth. And there's talk now, Mika, about extending it beyond. I think there's going to be more money in that year's budget, although that's yet to be voted on. So I'm here to work for the fifteen towns, about working in fifteen towns, there will be enough hours in a day. Basically, the first one that calls gets the attention, and it definitely was at the beginning of getting attention. And so I'm here to help. So what we do? So basically, again, we're not here to be your economic development staff, although it is possible for me to sit in if, if the administration wanted me to sit in on a meeting with a developer, just get another set of eyes on something, or another set of ears to listen for presentation. That would be something I could do. Mostly what I'm seeing in the fifteen town region, I've been working so far, this would be my fifth EDC that I've started to meet with, is I build capacity at the commission level. I find that many towns don't have dedicated economic development staff. Sometimes they're small towns like Woodbridge. There's, I'm looking, I've talked to a sort of selectwoman in Bethany. I've talked to them in Orange. I've been in West Haven, I've been in North Branford, which has a lot of similarities in, in terms of economic development than Woodbridge. And a lot of times, the commissions don't have a written plan, a set of goals and objectives, a mission. And a lot of them don't really know what economic development is. I'm not saying that the people that you nominated tonight don't know. But basically, you know, the sort of, if you'll excuse the sports metaphor, the blocking and tackling of economic development is business expansion, business retention, business growth. There's many, many things attached to that that are related, okay? And if you talk to businesses that are looking at the town, the first thing they're going to talk about is their workforce needs. They might be concerned about taxes and the town's financial position. But most, most businesses that would look at Woodbridge or many towns in the street and want to know where they can get their workers, that's the big, that's a really big issue. So, so I have lots of experience with workforce development programs and working with commissions. The idea is to give the commission a roadmap to move forward. So when I meet with them at the end of the month, I'm going to do a PowerPoint that I've been doing. I'll tailor to Woodbridge based on, you know, the available land and what I see, what I know. I'm born and raised in New Haven and live in Hammond now, so I play pickleball in Woodbridge all the time of the year. I don't know if that means anything.
He must know my mother.
With me, with me at the JCC, anyhow. But anyway, so we'll be doing lots of that, bringing resources, identifying things that either the First Selective's Office or the Finance Department or the commission didn't know about, a new program that might come out. I've also done a lot of work with the federal agencies, the Federal Economic Development Administration, which is through the Department of Commerce, federal EPA, which does a lot of site revitalization planning work on sites that are brownfields, and I know the site you're thinking about. And so, and you were talking about, it's very interesting to listen to the previous challenge that was here because it was very good for me to hear that, to hear your ideas and lots on that because that might affect the grant potentially. The other thing that we do is peer review economic development related grants. That's another reason why I'm here tonight, just to be a resource, not to write it, but to help shape it, perhaps to be the best possible grant it could be. And then if, if the commission has any specific programs they want to pursue, every town's going to be different. Let's say they want to improve, they want to pursue an incentive program. I'm not saying they're going to do that, but if they did, I would advise them on how they look, what they, how they operate, how, you know, what the financial implications based on your mill rate, things like that. So I've got a lot of experience in these things, and I can be a resource, and I'll say one more time, it's free. So I, I need to work as many hours as needed. And I'm very keen on working with the commission because they're really, you will depend on them to come up with some ideas and to become more educated in the, in the field of economic development. A very boutique field like many others, a lot of people that think they know about economic development, or they may just know one aspect of it. So that's pretty much what the Rex scope is, and I will be around this out all.
Any questions or comments here, or anything with regard to the EDC portion here?
I just have a quick question. So EDC, like our other boards and commissions, makes recommendations back to the board and selectmen for the most part on, on major things. And would you potentially be part of those presentations to us? Or you'll have them sort of take the long run of that?
I will, for lack of a better word, train them on how to, how to frame something and present it. I probably wouldn't do it if they, if somebody wanted me to explain something in a detail because of the fact, you know, for brownfields, a great example. I know phase ones, twos, and threes, and all the terminology that goes with it and what, what it really means. Although I'm not an engineer, I've, I've finished about two hundred different residential environmental cleanups, public parks, public buildings, business incubators. So I don't expect them to be an expert on every one of these things. I would maybe explain the technical reasoning behind something. In regard to business retention, that's, that's really different than business attraction. Different things to focus on. So I would help them to shape that dialogue.
Thank you.
Yeah. Dale, glad to see you here.
Hey, Dave.
Good guy. Well done. The.
He's free.
I just wondered if you.
Free, you don't get that very often.
Yeah, well, when I say that, oh, everybody goes, oh.
Have you looked at the twenty thirty plan at all?
I, I have.
Familiar?
Yeah, I, I've read it, I know some of the people on it.
Okay.
You know, because of, in the world of, when I was in Hammond, I dealt with some of them as realtors and deals and things. But I didn't really, because I knew I'd be working for the First Selective's Office and you guys, basically, I didn't want to get too deep into that until we talk more about it. But I, I did read their report, it has good things in it. I like the architect period, I think there's, there's some really nice work on that. And, you know, but I, I want to take my cue from the First Selective's Office before we get too far into that.
So.
Oh, you're a good guy.
With that in mind, the previous board of selectmen, maybe two ago, had the CERC report done. I don't know if that's been shared with you.
The which report, I'm sorry?
CERC.
Oh, so the Connecticut Economic Resource Center.
That's it, that's the one.
That's, that's a long, a while.
Yeah, it was putting projections forward to basically today, and I think they've all come true.
The update on that was all the bad ones.
Yeah, but it might help.
Yeah, CERC is now no longer CERC. It's Advanced CT. And one really good example of the kind of thing I would do is bring Advanced CT to your new commission to talk about their projections on, the data projections on economic growth, population characteristics, much in the same way Rex does the same thing on a broader level with the First Selective's Office in the town. But Advanced CT is an outside organization. They're very cluster based. So basically, if you have an industry that's, a bigger industry. So, basically, if you have an industry that's, a bigger industry in town, I'm gonna pick healthcare, because in Woodbridge you have a few healthcare facilities, you know, and senior care facilities. So, just like Hammond. That's how I know, Dave. But anyway, you would want to have Advanced CT give you some ideas on how to make those industries grow. If you had a manufacturing base, advanced manufacturing or something like that, they would, they would make, help make connections and give some ideas to your commission on how to advance maybe that part of the mission. And that's the kind of thing I would do. So, Advanced CT is now, is what CIRC used to be.
Great.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say, thank you so much for bringing this together, because I think that this is gonna be huge to kind of get our efforts coordinated and move forward. What was I gonna tell you? So, thank you.
Thank you. Before we close out on EDC, while we're still talking about commissions, I did want to just make one thing known in terms of a general piece of information. There was a question raised as relates to one of our commissioners, it says not to believe you said that way. There was a question raised in regards to one of our commissioners that had been appointed prior to the end of last year, and whether or not that was a valid, we did check, and because the board, because that commissioner took a vacant position and his term started prior to the new board taking over, or while the old board was still in place, it's okay. So, I just wanted more or less to explain that that was the case, and I apologize for not having mentioned that a little bit earlier, but I know it's something that has come up in before, and I wanted to publicly make sure you understood what was there. So, now, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, which is related to the brownfield. So, I think everyone has the brownfield presentation. And what we're looking for as far as the grant is concerned, this is a grant specific to the country property. And it's, a brownfield indicates usually there's some sort of remediation or some, something that needs to be cared for on that property, which certainly is the case here. But what the benefit that really lies here is that here's enough of a synergy between what we're looking to do with the consultant, we're looking to review and evaluate the consultants who responded to the RFP, where we could, there is every reason to believe we can use, I mean, it's not every reason to believe, we could definitely use these grants, the monies associated with this brownfield grant to help us with the consultant who we're looking to hire. So, that's, that's something that...
Not with a removal of...
No, no.
Separate.
All that, all that this grant would do, even if it was just full remediation, is tell you what you needed to do. It does not in any way, shape, or form associate, or includes something to actually do the work. But this is just strictly for consulting to analyze and identify exactly what you need to do, which we still can do, which we still would do with this grant. However, it could also help us in terms of the master plan and the, whatever consultant we choose for the master plan. So, that's why it's very important. What we're hoping to do is just establish a resolution so we can, or approve the resolution so we can move forward and with what we need to do in the grant. It is due March 1st. So, this one does add a little bit of a short, a short width on it. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Krupe, so he can give us a little bit more information.
Right, so, just changing hats, I'm just gonna report to you about the grant. I have, this is through the State Department of Economic and Community Development. It's a planning grant, as to your question about, it's not a remediation grant. And as Nika said, there's very, there will be some study of what is going on on the site. You've had lots of study in the past. Actually, some remediation has happened, not all of it, but some of it. I've read all the reports, so I have them all. I've read reports like that for the last 25 years, they're like 600 pages long. I've read the executive study, believe me. I don't read the labyrinth, I understand. So, this grant, as we can say, is due on the 1st. The award is probably gonna be in the late spring. They don't actually tell you when, but my experience is it's usually like three months out, so I would say sometime late May, early June. Then, there's a whole contract period that goes on for a couple of months. It's just bureaucracy. So, you really won't get access to the money to start doing anything, I would say probably till way into the summer, by the time you go to the contract. But you can encumber funds once they approve the grant. So, you know, you can go out for RFP for consulting. You can do all those things to get ahead of that. There's a two-year period to finish the grant, the planning study. The two years commence when the commissioner of ECD signs the agreement and sends it back to the town. So, the clock doesn't start tonight, for example. It starts when they approve it, and then you go through the paperwork. Chase, I have written many of these, I've administered many of these. They're very similar also to federal EPA site, if any of you are geeks for this sort of thing. If you go to the Region 1 for the EPA, there's a site revitalization program, is very similar to this, where you're looking at the potential reuse of sites or a site in a community, in this case, the golf course. And it's really to develop a comprehensive plan. My slides just had to give you the quick overview. If you look at this slide, these are the kinds of outcomes they expect to see when you're done. Doesn't mean you have to do them all, but they want to basically see that you've done some due diligence, first and foremost, with the public, and their public engagement is a requirement. How you define that is kind of negotiated with the state once they award the grant. You know, you're gonna have four public hearings, there're gonna be advertised here or there, you're gonna meet with certain individual groups or commissions, get input on their... And listening to the gentleman who was up before me, that was informative to me. If I was implementing it, and I would not be implementing it, hiring a consultant to do it, you want to integrate that conversation in this overall, because you might find, based on a cost-benefit analysis, the highest investment use of that property is to do X, Y, and Z, and I'm not gonna define X, Y, and Z, but that would create X, Y tax revenue, or save you money because you'll do something that you would have done on a town property, and this way you already own it, of course, it might be, you might subdivide it. I don't know what you're gonna do. So, the point is, the cost-benefit analysis would incorporate stuff about solar, whether that makes sense there, based on the overall need. You would look, you would get an economic analysis, you might get like an Advanced CT-type economic study of, you know, where the demographics are and the investment is and the cost of doing things. So, all of these things on this slide are basically an overview of what should come out of it, but you don't have to do every single thing. The only thing, if I were looking at this, the way it works, and I'm only asking this question so I can make a statement, do all of you really know the difference between a Phase 1, 2, and 3 site assessment? I mean, most people don't. So, the reason I, I don't know, but a Phase 1, a Phase 1 is like basically looking at the records of that site, where there are any spills, if something get reported to the state fire marshal. It's like a title search for environmental issues. They look at everything that's gone on. Usually, Phase 1s are obsolete after six months. If you were a private developer and had Phase 1 done, the bank would make you redo it, even though you know 100% nothing has happened on that site. But your Phase 1 is like 12 years old. So, in this particular grant, I would highly recommend you do another Phase 1, because ultimately, if you go back to the state for any assistance whatsoever, infrastructure-wise or whatever, they're gonna say, well, you didn't do an updated Phase 1, and then you'll get kicked out. So, my point is that you've not been doing much testing. If the Phase 1 comes back, nothing has happened on this site in 13 years, it's still the same conditions, then you don't, likely don't have to go to a Phase 2 or anything else. Phase 2 means, oh, Phase 1, there was a spill over here, let's go and dig some holes and see what's there. And look at, you know, the conditions, ground, water, soil, and so forth. Phase 3 means, oh, there's some stuff here, let's dig down further and quantify how much of that stuff and what it's gonna cost. But you don't, I don't see you getting into that, because I did read the reports. This is considered an establishment, which is the higher level cleanup and various aspects of the site. I don't know, I haven't walked the site, so, I played golf there a long time ago, but I suck, so I was probably in the woods somewhere. So, but the point is, it's important for you to have a little base knowledge, because when you, when it comes back to you, and you're representing your constituents, the Phase 1 will definitely have to be redone. That's the only thing I would strongly recommend you just do that, because it's gonna prevent problems for you later. The rest of it is community involvement, and I won't read all of it, but basically, prioritize what's the most important thing for the town or things that could be breaking it down. So, if you go to the second, the last two pages, it pretty much tells you what you can put in the grant. Now, I haven't seen the grant yet. I know it's being worked on through the First Selective's Office and with Tony, but I will take a look at it and, you know, give some input. I've written many of them. I wrote one similar to this in New Milford, Connecticut, back in September that I funded. The most you could apply for is 200,000. They only have a million for this category statewide, so I would, I always advise people to apply for only what you need. Don't always go for the max, because, you know, then it shows you're really doing your due diligence. You may end up at 200, I don't know what it's gonna be. I haven't seen any information, so. So, all these activities can be applied for. And again, in my role as an advisor to the First Selective's Office, to the town, that's the perfect role for me to say, you know, I don't know, number 3, number 1, don't do, you know, limited Phase 2, it's not necessary. But some of these other things, you definitely want to look at, a cost-benefit analysis, kind of the tax revenue. Look at conceptual ideas, look at your zoning regulations, you know, what would be like a big, you know, red flag if you were interested in a certain kind of development? These are all the things that are eligible. Citizen participation and engagement, a consultant will come here and do it, and they have to get paid to do it. So, you know, you would have to build a budget around it. I do a lot of community engagement, done a lot actually in New Hampshire and Maine over the last six months, and it's time consuming, but important. So, you know, when the budget goes together, I will advise Nika and Tony about the line items and so forth. And that's pretty much it. Those are the eligible activities, and, you know, and I look forward to continuing, you know, working until March, February 28th, right before the grant goes in. And then, and if there's a question, there's always questions from the ECD on applications. Sometimes they already know the answer, but they're asking you to see if you really know the answers. But they always have some questions, and I would be available to help. That's it.
I have a couple of questions. One of the things you said was going out to bid for a consultant to help is, we would have to wait till we awarded the funds before we can line up...
I would, yeah, I would do that. I would wait.
Okay, so that was one thing I wanted to understand.
And then, how much time did you say that was?
So, so if the award was, so if the award was on June 1st, just pick a date, you know, give them three months, at least another month or two. But if they award you, then they send you a letter, then they come with a big check, you know, and then, but then they give you a proposal for something you've already proposed, but that's, you know, that's the way the state works. And then, if, once you send a proposal, and how you're gonna administer this is what they're asking for. That's not even the contract. So, I'm gonna say two months out from the award, July, August 1st. So, once you have the award, though, June 1st, you should probably start preparing an RFP of some kind.
Great. So, another question for you, in the document, it talks about cleanup and reuse, and I'm wondering whether the term reuse is strictly understood to be the previous uses of this property, we're gonna reuse in the same way?
No, that's the point of the community involvement is at the site.
So, the options will be open. And then, my other question there, though, you've probably heard some of that previous conversation about what a map looks like when people in the town hear that we're talking about the country property. Would we potentially have the entire parcel as the area that's being put through this process, or would we make it where we know there is some, like we have that...
Very good question. All right, so, my experience with these things is that if it makes sense for you to say, you know what, we'd like to split the baby and break it in two, or, you know, one-third, two-thirds, and you want to reserve some space for that, let's say you really want to do solar, and you want to use two-thirds for some kind of development or whatever use it's gonna be. You come back to them after this, and that's the outcome, you're gonna, you're gonna subdivide the property, probably could always create zoning problems when you do that, but that's another story. But you can do that. That's their point. How are you gonna reuse the property for the community's benefit, even if you break it up?
And then, when we say, how are we gonna use the property? If we're gonna keep it as open space, that's also a use, right?
That's what?
It's also a use, or is it not?
Well, technically, if that's what you want to do, let, if you just had a big park, they'll probably be a little disappointed, because it is the Department of Economic and Community Development ultimately. But if that's what you want to do, and you show that's the highest investment use for that property, they're not gonna, they're not gonna take the money back or something like that.
So, in terms of, if the public has an expectation that some portion of this property's gonna be a park, should we try to figure that out now and only apply for the portion of the property?
No.
Because we need to analyze that.
Yeah, you need to analyze all of it and get public input. If there, if you had 50 people show up at a public hearing on this, and I would imagine you would, if you, the way you publicize things, anybody publicizes things, and they all wanted a public park, but you knew you'd want to do solar over here and maybe break off a piece for some kind of development. Again, I don't, I don't really have the sense of it unless I've walked it, because you have fishing ledge and wetlands, you know, and things like that. That's okay. They want you to take, the idea of this grant is for you to decide what, now, if you want to make it a park and you want to go back to them for money later, probably not. But you, but then you're gonna park.
But if we went back to them for more economic development...
For more, like, like build-out.
Okay.
But, but if you, if you want to make it 100% a park, or 50% of this and 30% that and 20% that, and you show it in the work that you did, because the public wants that, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, so it wouldn't be binding, again, it wouldn't be binding, it would just be the optics, Nika, of people will see us putting this whole thing into a process that says it's gonna be used for economic development, but we're not necessarily gonna do economic development of all parts of it.
No, no, that's sort of, in messaging, you know, that's the, it's really, I think the big thing to emphasize is that it's the Department of Economic and Community Development, not the Department of Economic Development.
Good, very good.
So, in that context, on doing cost-benefit analyses, are considerations made to like non-tri, monetary gains, monetary values that aren't applied to economic things? Like, there are ways to account for the monetary value of green infrastructure and the cost it saves people and communities in many things, in clean air, in heating and air conditioning, and infrastructure control, like flood control and things like this.
Anything that you define as a cost and a benefit to the community is okay.
Okay.
So, in other words, if you kept it as a public profit, your public works department's gonna spend money there. You have to see, you know, whatever you have to do. So, that's a cost. But the benefit will be that you don't have to do something else somewhere else. I mean, it's really how you define cost and benefit. It's not, it's not like a, like, if you know the term real estate, it has to pencil out, like there has to be a profit and a loss. It's not like that at all. But there's gonna be a cost if you own it, or it could be a benefit if you own some of it and you have the solar lease, which would be a revenue. So, integrating, like, and listening to him saying it's gonna be six months before he has, you know, he gets to the next level and they're gonna be doing that, that's actually perfect timing in how this turns up. If you have two years to do this, don't forget. So, he's gonna give you the information in the fall, let's say, based on what he was saying, listening to his presentation. You're gonna be right in the middle of starting to put this together in the fall. And you think about, if you don't even really get started until August, you go on vacation and all this stuff, you're gonna be engaging the public, let's say, in the late summer or early fall, while he's doing his thing. You're gonna probably have some public information of what he's doing. You're gonna be, one of the things you're gonna be doing here is getting a better map, getting an updated map that really shows where things are, and articulating that map in a way that the public, not just engineers, understand it. So, actually, the timing of what he was talking about is perfect, as it fits in. So, eventually, you come to a decision in the spring of '25 on what you're gonna do as it relates to this as well.
So, that, just a quick question for you. That timeline is very similar to, we have to do a plan of conservation development as well. We also have the RFP out for a consultant to help us with that. Do you see these brownfield projects as part of POCD process, or is it just has to happen when it happens?
No, I, I see brownfields as an important part of POCD, actually, because they're assets. They could, let's say, you know, sometimes remediation is, is capping something. You know, if you need more parking somewhere, it could be lots of things. If you need to increase pumps, make enough stuff. If you're making, you need to increase parking and you happen to have a brownfield near a public park or something like that, you don't have to take everything out depending on what problem. If it's dirt versus groundwater, you know, these things are, will definitely drive the conversation. But brownfields are an important part, and it sort of depends on where they are and how many you have. Like in Hampden, I started a development corporation during my time because we were completely built out as a town. There was no place for developers to come in. Yeah, the current owners could expand and improve, but there's no place to build anything new unless you got rid of the brownfields and made it available. And, and that was a focus, so that became part of the POCD in certain areas. I don't say that you have that problem because I don't know town law enough yet, you know that.
I have a question about the resolutions. The grant had a 10% match.
That's correct.
So what is the difference in the number that we're seeing for what we have to reserve for fiscal year '24 budget?
We have it in the budget already in terms of the, the max is $20,000.
Right, so $20,000.
If this is.
They lie for the max.
Right, this is, so authorized up to $33,245. I just didn't know what the difference is.
$33,245 represents what we have in the budget currently for the consultant for the country club. So assuming that these projects are tied together, that's.
Oh, gotcha.
There's nothing stopping you from putting in more than $10,000, though, I'm just saying.
So are we out of compliance by already having gone through the RFP process for the consultant?
No.
Okay.
No, no, you, there's going to be certain, I, I don't know what the RFP said, but my guess is there's other boutique services you're going to need that I don't know if your current consultant can provide. But I, you could do more than one service. You can do more than one RFP. I don't want to burden the town, say the burden of the town. But if there's something that's really important, like the economics part, I'm working on a project in Claremont, New Hampshire. And there's a woman that I work with who's a consultant who does real estate and demographic analysis. God bless her, I don't really want to get into that stuff. I'm more on the build-out part of it. And I bring her into everything I do because she's excellent. And so she's just doing economic piece. So your cost-benefit analysis is much more sophisticated when it comes down to it than you're even thinking, or I'll explain it. So you could do more than one RFP. I'd probably sit down with Mika and Tony and look at the previous one and see where you can get other services to submit here.
And this is all work that needs to get done before we submit on March 1?
The resolution is the only thing you need to do. And then, then they have to finish the grant.
Right, so, so we would be potentially, I'm sure you want to get to a motion because we've been talking for a while. So the motion tonight is to authorize you to submit it and all this figuring out exactly how much we're applying for and what kind of services and all that, that has to be in the grant, that has to be done.
Well, the numbers have to be in the grant. Well, the services do not have to be in the grant. And, and what the grant says is, well, between now and the end of the month, that's what I'll be working with them on.
The resolution is what's important because it demonstrates that the town has committed and has funds to, to do our 10% and we're, we want this done. This is something we want to see happen. And it, and from our perspective, it's worth whatever we need to do to expedite the process and grow the resources we need at it because it couldn't have come at a better time. We're, we're looking at doing something at the country club and we're looking at hiring a consultant and we now have a resource that's going to help, could help us pay for this if we're actually, if we actually get it. So it's, you know, the timing is great.
Can I just ask one more question? The, in, we might have the autonomy to make this clear, but when we consider the potential reuse of this property, can it be in the, you know, will it be in the context of the landscape of the town? Meaning, is, is the analysis specific to the 150, whatever acres are written into the grant? And the, or is it specific to that site in the context of our economy, of our green list, of our open spaces that already exist?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, it's, it's interesting you mentioned it because this is a discussion I've had with, for example, the folks at Beach Rock who are looking to do a feasibility study. And the studies that they're doing at the Center Building for renovation of that building and Country Club, et cetera. So my sense is, okay, so how do we take it more holistic? Do we make sure that all of these things are not in any way, shape or form conflicting with one another? Or we're not operating in individual cycles? We can, here, try to see if there is an opportunity for us to look at a consultant who can take it more holistically, will not, is not just looking at the country. Because we haven't hired anybody yet. We haven't outlined specifically what we want. We have the opportunity to do that. So, and I think that's important. So if I'm understanding your question?
Yeah.
It's really important we do that, but that might not be feasible. In other words, the people we need for Beach Rock School might not have the expertise that we need for the country club.
Understood.
You know, that type of thing there. So as they all indicated, we may need to do additional. And I think it's important that we make sure that we keep that in mind in terms of who we're hiring and why.
Yeah.
You know, so, so and.
I guess, yeah, I think.
There's no specific answer to that question?
Sure.
But I feel strongly that whatever we do has to leave that money.
Okay. Could I get a quick budget question? So the money that we had set aside for the planner that we potentially use here, is that this fiscal year or this fiscal year?
It's from several years ago.
Okay, yeah, so it's available?
We could use it now.
And somehow we'll continue to keep it available?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So we are looking for the, for the resolution and.
Do you have a motion for a resolution?
We do need a motion.
We have a motion.
Moving forward inside of the resolution for a second, as presented in our package.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? The one thing I'll also mention is that I do see this as a great opportunity for the EDC to get their teeth into something as well in terms of assisting assignments. So it's really a good thing. And I'm glad we have somebody who knows it real well and is helping EDC, so, but thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Let it go. Communities, thank you, Dale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex, very much welcome.
Appreciate you sitting through it through.
Actually, it was good to listen to the previous person, to not actually.
Thanks, Alex.
Mika, to chill as earlier, I do think if folks re, for the remediation and redevelopment of the country club, there might be some concern with citizens out there, so whatever it's worth.
And the, the other thing I think is going to be continued, I'm just a busy child with, is that kind of communication.
Yeah.
Is really truly that kind of communication. Just like, that's why I feel our conversations here are very, very important to just, to hash it out, just to make sure everybody understands it. So the questions you're asking are very important so people understand, yeah, you've asked a question. This isn't, this isn't.
Doesn't mean we're developing a country club.
Exactly, listen. Okay, Tony, you're back.
Yes.
Suddenly it's 5:30 again.
You're worried that's going to move along.
I know.
You did the fool in the gym. That was Brad, Brad 1263. And we were, I think we were, uh, fifteen thousand.
Correct, yep.
So we are line item transfer number 2324-14 for $15,000 to replace grant funds to the Woodbridge Government Access TV budget to replace the failed Tricaster, a video production system.
Make a motion.
And we have a motion for the approval of line item transfer number 2324-14. Do we have a second?
One second. I have a quick question. Is the, has it gone into motion? Is it happening? Is the money already expended?
We received the money. You sort of received money, but we haven't expended anything related to your approval.
Then we'll replace the Tricaster.
Correct.
Then we'll be back in business.
Yes, we have a quote for the Tricaster already in place. That's in the transfer. That's coming, about half, that's going to cover about half of the grant we were given last year from the Cable Advisory Council. So we have that already pretty much covered. We're just waiting on the green light at this point.
Thank you.
Additional comments? All in favor? Line item transfer is approved. The next one is line item transfer 2324-15 for $3,400. This is due to unanticipated purchase of computers.
We have two, two computers, computers that we didn't anticipate purchasing this soon.
I'll make the motion that we approve line item transfer 2324-15 for $3,400. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Here goes the last one.
Okay.
Next item on the attend, on the agenda is town council report.
About 45, 50 minutes. Guys, be comfortable with that. No report, Mika. No litigation, no anticipated litigation, no litigation that I can see who I think of or appreciate. And hopefully you guys will take a look at the next item, which is very important.
And we will take, the next item is the.
You guys are going to miss me.
But are we mine?
What about the lawsuit? Is that not the?
On the 28th, we're going to, 28th, we're going to get an update on that during the second session. Has to be during the second session.
Okay, thank you.
But I'd rather do one session, so.
He doesn't have that.
Okay, in regards to new town council, we have, after reviewing a number of different prominent attorneys in the area, we have, I looked at and identified Burcham and Moses as being the company that we would like to move forward with as town council. The attorney who would be our town council and attending our meetings is Nick Almonte. And he will be supported by one of his senior partners, Ira Blum. And I just wanted to indicate to you that what went, went into this election and, I mean, part of the folks here at the stable, certainly part of the selection clause, others who are familiar with the town attorney type of, type of activities. These, this company demonstrated the difference is a couple things. One, they will, they will retain the rate based on where it's spending now, so we don't have to change our budget from a retainer standpoint. Their hourly rates for things outside of the retainer are higher. Everyone's were higher. These were, these were middle as opposed to some of the others that were a little lower and some that were much higher. So that's one of the reasons. They demonstrated, they were very proactive in terms of, once we indicated to them that we were interviewing, they sent information. They, they called, they were very proactive in terms of their approach, certainly indicating like it was very important for them, for us. Additionally, they have references that include West Port Wilton and a number, and some other Fairfield County towns that are similar in profile to ours. And they also spoke with Mayor Alaker and Haven, who uses them extensively, who also gave them a very, very good reference and recommendation. They focus, they have a focus on municipal law. A lot of the other firms had municipal law department, if you will, or we got the sense that that was the case as opposed to this is what, this is what they actually do and specialize in. They've been doing it for quite some time, quite successfully. And as I said, we did check with the, we have recommendation letters from a number of the folks who that's the case with. And they're, they have a considerable experience in both POCD, which I thought was very important going for this year, as well as charter revision. And they've been, both of the folks who I'm talking are indeed town councils who go to meetings like Jerry has been as well. It's not something new for them at all. So, as I say, the other firms, I won't mention them here, but if you, if you feel like you want to know, they are, I will be, let me know. And I'm happy to let the public know because it's public knowledge anyway. But I do feel that these, this was the best choice. My understanding is that we can make this choice, being professional services, that I can make this choice and just move forward. I just thought it was, would be best if we, I, I would like to get the approval, let you know what I'm, what I'm doing and why. And, and at least get a vote confidence, if you will, for that. So just, so I'm asking if you would endorse my decision.
Thank you for asking.
Do you have a motion for approval? Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to endorse the selection of Burcham and Moses as a town council.
Second.
Any way of discussion, Maria? Any way of discussion? Did everyone receive the retainer agreement? Did everyone get it in the?
Yes.
Okay.
And, Mika, do you mind just clarifying? I know you stated this, but I was reading as you were talking like that. Is the, their presence at our monthly, regular and maybe special meetings part of the retain, the monthly?
That is correct. So our question is, the way we operate with Jerry, I don't expect that everyone will be calling these folks the way we might necessarily with Jerry, but certainly there's, there's a quality to this.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional thoughts, comments? All in favor? I really appreciate it, folks, thank you.
Thank you.
And this will give me the okay to have them start attending our meetings. So that's the other reason I wanted to issue this today.
So, Mika, does this also signify that Jerry Weiner is free to go now or?
By this clause, you're.
We, I should have mentioned that I was explaining. The other thing, they were very amicable to a transition agreement where they will stay with, they will, without additional expense, work with Jerry for the next month or month to transition and get, get an understanding of itself. So that is another, so Jerry will be here for a little bit longer in terms of, we'll probably have hold come for at least where we need to, if there's, if there's no reason for, but at least I can start, for example, if there's a question tomorrow, I can start calling, you know, so.
Sure.
And Tony was very much a big part of this and, you know, the budget piece of it is another important thing. And you'll notice in the retainer agreement that it does indicate that after a number of months, we can relocate and see if maybe we're way over or way under and we could renegotiate it, but obviously the board will be made very much aware of that.
Well, in case I don't get another opportunity, I want to take a moment to just thank Jerry for his years of service to the town.
Many years.
And his dedication to Woodbridge.
Thank you.
It's tremendous and I thank you.
And it's been a pleasure working with this board, the Pride Board and all Pride Boards. You know, I mean, there'll be some disagreements, but I think everybody unanimously is working for the best interest of the town. So it's a quite unique and extraordinary community.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
All right, town council, Personnel Committee report. Personnel, Personnel Committee met specifically for new hires and a stipend. And would someone from the Personnel Committee like to go over that for them?
Go over to.
That table, please.
So there were three actions that the Personnel Committee reviewed. The first action was to hire, there was a position opening for a head of technical services. And so the library director, Eric Worthman, we reviewed with Personnel Committee the process that he used to hire the new fine head of technical services. And the library commission has also voted to recommend the hiring of Adrian Pelletier as head of technical services for a salary of $59,000 a year beginning as soon as she's available.
Can I just clarify that that was a refill? Because the Shani might just.
Correct, yeah, that's where it was an open position.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we approve the hire of. Second. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
So unlock your iPhone first.
That's true. The second action is also another open position. The, it's for animal control officer. As you may or may not, we discussed at the budget meeting, we are a, we run animal control operation four, three times. And we have two full-time ECOs. And one of those positions was open. And so the vote unanimously recommended to approve the hiring of Jesse Collado for a position of animal control officer at 2582 per hour.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
One second.
Any discussion?
I'll just add, just so folks know.
I'll just add, just so folks know, Jesse has been working part-time.
Correct, she's been working.
Already, the capacity.
She's been there for, for just a year, in that capacity.
Any additional comments, discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
And the last was, um, to recommend to the board of selectmen to approve the request toward a one-time stipend of one thousand five hundred dollars to Janice Incezi, who is, uh, works, uh, for the chief of police for performing extra duties and responsibilities due to the extended absence of the records clerk at the police department. And, uh, just sort of a thank you for, uh, Janice going above and beyond her duties to make sure that the essential responsibilities of that position remain, um, while the, um, records clerk is, um, absent. But not as a non-related, non-work-related absence.
I'll make a motion to approve the second question.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any comments? All in favor? Thank you.
I'm all in.
All right. All right. That's, uh, that takes us to our, actually, our last item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. All board members have received and reviewed the items on the consent agenda? Are there any requests to move items from the consent agenda?
Mika, I don't have a request, but the one from the Soro Farm, that has to have an eight dash twenty-four referral. So implicit in this consent agenda is that the board will be voting on referring it to P N C for eight dash twenty-four.
Do we need to add that to the item? It's no action there.
Well, he's not allowed that.
Let's pull it out of the consent agenda and then we can do it.
You can do it either way, or, or, we can pull it out. It just takes a second.
Okay.
I just wanna make it clear that the referring it for eight twenty-four.
I just have a question with having Steve on our board. Was he able to vote for that?
I'm not gonna say he can't vote because the person can do whatever they want, but...
Just a logistical question. I'm not trying to interfere with the progress of this. I'm just to understand.
But I would, I would expect that if it's a matter related to the Soro Farm, that he would either accuse himself or provide an indication as to why, it wouldn't be appropriate or he doesn't feel it's necessary. And, you know, we've had that discussion, so, yeah.
Thank you.
It's good to bring it up so everyone understands the circumstances.
And then if I pull it out, then I will apply for a statement.
Correct.
Still a lot of consent cases as well.
Okay, oh, good for him.
So the other item that I wanted to talk about is the minutes of quite late tonight. And it encourages to me that there might be an opportunity to talk a little bit more about the minutes at our next meeting when we're gonna be talking about budget. And I know there's several pieces of the budget where we have people assigned to do minutes and the question of the depth of detail. We've, we've gotta change and we've got a different type of minutes here. The question of whether the board of selectmen wants more detail, less detail is fine, whatever it is. But I think if, we can just leave it in here with the thinking in mind, I'd like to revisit this idea next, next meeting. Does that sound reasonable?
I have no problem with that. I will say that I did do a check on the minutes and referred both to documentation as well as resources. In this case, the F O I folks in training and, um, the town clerk who indicated that the way we were doing it, I asked if there was anything specific about the minutes that we should consider changing. In, in both cases, it was not the case. Um, and I, and it, just to be clear in terms of, you should be clear in terms of...
Yeah, um, so my concern was mostly in, um, relating or referring to the videotapes, videotapes or the recordings of the meetings are not currently, um, considered town records. So they're not in the retention schedule the same way as minutes are. Um, and so we lose a little bit of detail if those videotapes disappear a year and a half or two years from now and all we have in the minutes is, you know, the video. So I don't know, I mean, obviously, we only need the motions, uh, who's attended. There's bare bones minutes. The board of selectmen has usually always had more. The question of whether we wanna allocate resources to all that kind of minute-taking or not is maybe something we should discuss in terms of what other boards are also receiving too, because some boards would, uh, would end up with more minutes than we have, so.
Understood, and I, and I don't have an issue with the rest of the board can feel, basically, keep it, we're just gonna keep it here.
I'll leave it here for now, yeah.
Yep, and then, and then, uh, discuss it again. Thoughts? Everybody okay?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to discuss.
So can we move ahead to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the, uh, item?
All right, well, we asked if there were any items to be removed, and we identified that we will remove the, the, that one item. The, um, that's the signing the land, landowner concurrence. So we will remove that item and we will go on that separately after we complete the consent agenda. Um, I will, I'll now read the items, the agenda items. Call for motion to approve and adopt and acknowledge. The request for town property use for Earth Day event, and you've all heard about Earth Day at this point in time. You've heard me say it many, many other times going forward. The proclamation designation, designating March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four as school board member day. Signing the land, no, excuse me, the resolution of Frank, Chief Frank Tapiello to apply on behalf of the town of Woodbridge for the twenty-twenty-four E N P G. The board of selectmen, January ten and January thirty meeting minutes. Your reappointment of four-year term commencing January one, two thousand twenty-four ninety-seven thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven to Stephanie Cardi, Cardi Wiglio, Char Wiglio. Register of Vital Statistics Karen Berchem, Deputy Register of Vital Statistics Susan Castellot, Assistant Register of Vital Statistics and Kim Ryu, Assistant Register of Vital Statistics. And the ad hoc committee appointments to Beecher Building Committee Maria Mathanik and E E I Jennifer Lofters and Housing Warner Marshall and Miles Katz. The resignation of Javier Villas from Coop Hop and D E I and Cindy Zacoan...
Zaco Verrotney.
Zaco Verrotney, thank you, for, from library. And I apologize to those in the, in the town clerk's office whose names I might mispronounce. Repetitive.
They tend to go by the Zacks.
So.
For that reason.
So I will now look for, call for motion?
And the college one proceeds.
To, to, I will look for a motion to approve, adopt, and acknowledge.
You got the announcement, I was in receipt of the town clerk's report.
I'm sorry, and, thank you, and the receipt of the town clerk's report. Acknowledged and received, town clerk's report. Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. We will now take the item of the signing of the landowner concurrence form from the U S D A and R C S for the Soro Farm to install a high tunnel. Wish under that was.
Okay, I think you can say, uh, Allison, the motion is approved, signing the landowner concurrence form from the U S D A and R C S for the Soro Farm to install high, uh, high tunnels, uh, subject to favorable review pursuant to eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut General statutes by the planning itself.
Uh huh.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
One second.
Discussion will be made. Can you tell me a little bit about high tunnel?
Yeah, so a high tunnel essentially is an unheated green, so it's the same structure, uh, hoops, metal, metal hoop with a plastic covering. We use steel, uh, end walls and, and of polycarbonate for the frame, and that's because we're in a windy area and so, uh, that extra structure on the end keeps it, it's extra sturdy. There's also additional wind bracing, ventilation, all, uh, non, it's all, uh, hand, handwork. There's no, there's no power, there's no heat. Uh, we have several of these on the farm already, so the vent tubes are, we've seen them there. There's one separate that's closer to the, to the barn that is heated, that's a greenhouse. The others look like greenhouses, but there's no heat, there's no electricity. Uh, we use them to extend the season, uh, our grow season to grow year-round on the farm and to mitigate its climate change, uh, impact.
Thank you. And because it's a town-owned property, we have to go pay twenty-four.
And it's our cost, the town doesn't, no, no cost, the town doesn't pay anything if it's Soro's.
So N R C S, you received a grant from N R C S, too. Awesome. Congratulations.
Any comments, any thoughts, questions? All in favor? All opposed, none?
I love Steve.
Thank you. All right, I believe that concludes all, all our agenda items.
Second.
Everybody should second that one. Folks, I thank you very much. It does seem like quite like four hours.